All right. Good evening, everyone. Let's see, we have one, two, three, four, five of us. And I think Ann is not going to be here. So I think we can commence. Good evening. Today is now is the time and place for the August regular meeting of the Royal Oak Planning Commission. And the first thing we'll do, we're going back, we've gone back to Zoom. So we're gonna call the roll to start and you'll have to remember to tell us where you're at. So why don't we begin with Mr. Curtis there?
I'm here in sunny Royal Oak, Michigan.
All right, Mr. Gantina.
Woody Gantina in Royal Oak.
Mr. Klooster.
Eric Klooster, Royal Oak, Michigan.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Mike Fornier, beautiful Royal Oak, Michigan.
Commissioner Douglas.
Present in Royal Oak.
And I'm Gary Casada. I'm also in Royal Oak. So the first order of business is to approve the meeting minutes for the July 13th, 2021 meeting. If we had a chance to look at these, are there any questions? Oh, Mr. Curtis.
I have a couple of corrections, I think. One is somewhere in there, it says Paul Curtis left the meeting. No, Paul Curtis' call was dropped. Paul Curtis tried to call back in and was not allowed to participate. So somehow technology failed Paul Curtis. Paul Curtis stayed as faithful as possible. The second thing on the list, I believe the final vote had to do with about this meeting being virtual. I'm pretty sure recollection serves. Mr. Casada voted no and Ann Bieke voted yes, but it doesn't say it that way in the minutes.
All right, well, we can always go back and check. So, Mr. Twang, what's the procedure here? Since I don't remember that off the top of my head, what's the procedure for making an amendment to these?
Normally, you would, if you concurred with those changes, you would make a motion to approve the minutes as amended. If you want us to check them and hold them over until the next meeting, we can do that and go back and look at the tape and verify.
All right. Any comments from the commissioners on that? Any discussion? Anybody want to move to approve the minutes as amended, approve them as they're presented, or have them be revised and move to the next meeting?
I guess for me, barring any other issues from any other of the commissioners with the minutes, I would not have an issue holding them over till the next meeting for approval and just verifying that we do document the one vote correctly.
All right, is that a motion?
It can be. So I will move to hold the approval of the minutes over to our next meeting, giving staff enough time to verify the votes of Commissioner Bieke and Chair Kasak.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, any discussion on this? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Why don't we start with Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Gantina.
Yes.
Mr. Fornier. I mean, sorry, Mr. Klooster, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion carries. We'll hold those over the next meeting, make the proposed corrections. Maybe there could be some further communication on that offline and make sure we have the meetings revised and ready for the next meeting. Okay. Next order of business, is there any additions to the agenda that anybody seeks to propose at this time? Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I just, I don't know. I think we need to talk about what we're doing with meetings going forward, and I don't see that on the agenda.
Okay. I think we can add that to the end of the discussion, if that's okay? That's probably a good idea. Mr. Klooster, did you ever hand up or were you adjusting your screen?
Just seeing my screen, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gantina, did you ever hand up?
I did. I'd like to add an item, if we have time, to the end of the agenda for a quick discussion on the signage of the Henry Ford building at Centennial Commons.
I certainly have no problem with that. We can add that to the end. That would be, it would be okay with me. Anybody object? All right, we'll add that to the end of the meeting as well. Any other comments about or proposals for additions to the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. All right, so the next issue is public comment on non-agenda items. I understand there was some. Mr. Schwanger, is that correct?
There was one that introd themselves that way, but then the comment going forward commented on agenda items. So I grouped it with the ones pertaining to the zoning tax ordinances. At this time, that if you would like me to apply it now, I can do that.
I think that that would be more appropriately played in connection with their discussion of the zoning ordinance proposed text amount. So given that, are we, we don't have any other public comment on non-agenda items?
No.
All right. That being the case, we'll move on to new business. First, the first item is a public hearing, a special land use permit and site plan to construct an automatic car wash at 3180 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twang, can you give us a rundown?
Sure, I'll highlight it briefly. You should have a copy of the staff's special land use report as well as the site plan memo in front of you on the webpage. As you indicated, the petitioner is proposing to construct a car wash. It is at the Pier One former site. They are proposing to demolish that building and construct a car wash of approximately 3,800 square feet as well as some vacuum stations on the north end of the site. The zoning is general business, and in that district, the car washes are a special land use, and therefore that's the reason for the hearing this evening. As part of your consideration and determinations, I'll highlight a few items that are in your report. One of those is first listed is in regards to the actual size of the property being adequate near determination that it's of sufficient size and configuration to handle the proposed car wash. The site is some 20,300 square feet in area and has frontages of almost 205 feet along Woodward and another 120 feet along Hunter Avenue. The second is in regards to the building placement and setbacks. The planning commission does have discretion in terms of compliance with 25-foot setbacks or something less than that if you determine that it's reasonable and there's no really other alternatives being considered. In that regard, they're proposing a rear yard setback of some 19.6 feet from the center line of the alley that runs north-south, parallel to Woodward, to the building. The building also sets back some 32 feet from Hunter Avenue to the nearest point of the building. The next item I would point out is simply that primary access for all vehicles to the site would be from Woodward Avenue via a driveway kind of at the northwest corner of the site. There are also four driveways that provide egress to the alley. And in that determination, there are two that are vehicle movements and two that are technically access to parking. And that's how there was an arrival at having four driveways in that regard. The ordinance does allow driveways every 50 feet with car washes. As I indicated, there's some 200 feet involved. So there's not an issue with the overall number of driveways proposed along the alley. There is a provision in regards to proximity of driveways that they should not be within 30 feet of each other. Obviously, that's not the case in regards to these. But again, the planning commission does have discretion in terms of whether you feel that layout configuration is adequate or inadequate in that regard. The next item in regards to those four driveways, one of which is parallel parking spaces that run adjacent to the building. You'll see that there's three of those parallel spots. Again, technically under the ordinance, that's treated as a driveway access, and it's some 75 feet in length. The ordinance doesn't allow driveways more than 30 feet at the property line. This item would need zoning board of appeals approval. And because it's a special land use, you would have to grant them permission to seek that variance. The next item, just in regards to parking, they are required to have five parking spaces based on the size of the building and the requirement of one space for every 800 square feet. They do have five spaces indicated. Again, the three parallel and then there are two more towards the south end of the site, southeast corner of the site. The next item is in regards to stacking spaces. You will see that there are stacking, two lanes of stacking spaces proposed on the submitted plans. There are a total of 16 available tax stacking spaces, which is the minimum required. There are four that come immediately out of the entrance area, and then there are six more in each one of the two lanes of stacking spaces. And then there is the technical escape lane or bypass lane being proposed closest to Woodward Avenue. I guess the next item that's up for your consideration would be the landscaping and screening. There is a landscape plan that's submitted. Your determination as to whether or not that is sufficient or whether you would request more as part of your discussion. They are proposing a 30-inch screening wall along the south side of the site. There is, there is no screening proposed to the east along the alley or the opposite side of the alley. If you've seen the site or seen the aerial, there is a multifamily dwelling immediately east that has parking access on the east side of the alley. So requiring a screening on that side of the alley is not possible. And then with the four driveways on the west side of the alley, it's not possible there either based on this configuration. Staff did suggest in the site plan memo, I won't go too detailed into that yet, but that the 30-inch wall be added along the Woodward side to provide some protection between the sidewalk and the bypass lane as well. I guess I'll stop there with the, kind of the overview. We'll get into more of the site plan issues and discussion once you move past the special land use.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Twang from the commissioners? All right, seeing none, are the applicants present? It looks like they are. If the applicants would come forward, introduce yourselves and give us a presentation of what, why you seek, relief you seek.
Mr. Chairman, this is Dennis Cowan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. With me, we have our team in a conference room, and we're gonna move screens as needed. I'm going to bat leadoff. First of all, it is good to be with all of you in the planning commission. Hopefully, one day soon, we'll be able to meet in person. But with me this evening is Cliff Lunny, the managing partner of Michigan Express, which will hold the Tommy's Express franchise for this location, Jordan Jonah, who is the property owner representative, and also Eric Williams from Stonefield Engineering, who will walk us through the site plan once I finish my remarks, and then Cliff has some remarks. So we find ourselves at the former Pier One location on Woodward, a little bit south of 14 Mile. And unfortunately, this location has been vacant for the last almost three years. If you drive along Woodward, all of you know we have some serious issues with vacancies. And the retail model that we had in the past really isn't working today for a variety of reasons, most of which are the trucks that come down our streets every day delivering goods that normally would have been purchased at stores. So that being said, there were no takers in the last three years for the site. So they had an opportunity to come along, look at Tommy's Express, which is an outstanding franchise, over 50 years old, headquartered in Georgia. It is moving into Michigan and is moving kind of from the west side of the state over to the east side. There is a location currently that was just built up in Auburn Hills. So the use of a car wash is very consistent with many automotive uses already on Woodward. And under your ordinance, the special, what I call auto wash ordinance 770-67, as Tim Fwang has rightfully pointed out, there are a number of issues and decisions you need to make. But the ordinance does provide the planning commission with broad discretion. There are about 30 ordinances similar to this that cover everything from cemeteries to churches to restaurants that serve alcohol, and of course, a car washes. So this discretion allows you, since we don't have a one-size-fits-all approach, to make sure that the site is right for the use intended. And that is the key issue. All of the details aside, and they are important and will cover all those, all those planning and zoning details come down really to one basic, major question. And that is, is this site efficient and does it flow? And our answer is yes, and Eric Williams will cover that in the site plan. So I believe you all have my letter that I sent in advocating for the project. There's just a couple of highlights I want to bring to your attention. First of all, we have with this site plan in use some very significant changes and improvements to the overall picture on the site. For example, the building is currently right to the lot line on Hunter. And now there will be a setback, and in fact, it will be a landscape, significantly landscaped setback. Prior to this time, we had about 2% landscaping on the site. Will be over 15% with the current configuration. And then with respect to the alley, currently, there are parts of the building which almost abut the alley. We will now have a consistent 19 and a half foot setback from the alley, which I think will be a vast improvement. Finally, there are currently nine parking spaces behind the building. Those will be reduced to five. And although, as Tim explained, some of these parking spaces are considered driveways, this is not unlike the rest of Woodward. The rear of all the buildings are used for parking to varying degrees. This will be used solely for employee parking. And Cliff will, Cliff Lunny will talk about how many employees will be on site each, each working day. So we believe that there'll be some significant improvements. This is also an environmentally sustainable project. It uses a nearly 100% reclaimed water system. So this water is not going into the storm drainage system. They use less water per vehicle, about 22 gallons per wash as opposed to a typical car wash, which uses over 100. There's low energy use and environmentally safe detergents. We also, it's very important to Cliff, who's been a Royal Oak businessman in the past, in the community, to have a good relationship with our neighbors, both commercial and residential. So last week, a week ago today, we met at Emmanuel Bethel Church with neighbors. We sent out invitations to everybody on the city's list. We had 13 people show up, most of them from Hunter Avenue, which abuts the project. And it was a good give and take. We answered every question that was posed with respect to the car wash facility and Tommy's Express. There were issues that arose with the neighborhood regarding the Shell Station to the south. Those aren't our issues, but they certainly were issues of concern. So out of that neighborhood meeting, we have two proposals that are not in anything we've submitted. Well, I actually submitted one of them, but the two proposals are as follows. First of all, the neighbors asked that at the alley, we would have a no-left turn into Hunter. They always, they also asked if we would advocate that a similar sign would be put on the other side of the street coming out of the Shell Station, no right turn onto Hunter. So we think that would be helpful in making people aware that they should go towards Woodward if they do come out through the alley. And I might add, our traffic is going in off of Woodward and coming out off of Woodward. The only time anybody would ever need to get to the alley would be if they changed their mind, and that probably happens less than one car a day. So the second issue is the three lanes that are in front of the building on Woodward. Two of them are stacking lanes. The third lane is a required bypass lane. And I know these are required particularly for fast food restaurants. We really don't believe there is a good reason to have the bypass lane. So out of, say, an abundance of caution, even though we do meet the stacking requirement, we believe that that should be, that stacking lane should be turned into a, excuse me, that bypass lane should be turned into a stacking lane. That will give us well over 22 parking stacking spaces or so. We'll cover that when Eric goes over the site plan. But we believe that would, would be a consideration for you. We are not able to do the masonry wall and the landscaping in front simply because we ran out of space. If you should find that the bypass lane is not needed at all, perhaps then we could include that masonry wall in additional landscaping as you, as you deem necessary. There will be no late-night deliveries, no smells or odors, no intercoms or speakers. This is about as friendly as an operation you could get. The noise is very muted and is only at the entrance, but that'll be covered later. So we are requesting your special land use approval and permission to go for probably a couple of variances to the zoning board of appeals. So with that being said, I'm now going to kick this over to Cliff Lunny, who is the representative of the, of Michigan Express, which will own the Tommy's franchise. Thank you.
Okay. We have some echo there. Feedback.
I think we're good now. Good? Okay, sorry. So hello, everyone. My name is Cliff.
Only one.
So my name is Cliff Lunny. I have had the pleasure of owning and running a business in Royal Oak for approximately 18 years. I started the Jimmy John's Downtown. A lot of the renovations starting and the changes.
You have a lot of, excuse me, you got a lot of echo there. So if anybody in the room also has their sound on, you just need, you have one, I think you have to have one microphone on, and everybody else has theirs off.
Sure.
I'm not, I'm not a technical computer whiz, but that's what happens to me.
No, I feel like I'm on the commercial. I say turn your mute on. So I think we're good now. We, so sorry about that.
Okay, sound good.
So. Perfect. So I, so I ran Jimmy John's and opened up the first Jimmy John's in downtown Royal Oak and really started to process in 2000 and ended up opening in 2001 and ran it for almost 19 years before I sold that business and moved on. So I've, and I lived in Royal Oak for a lot of those years. So I love the city. It's been a big part of my life and very excited to, I wish I was standing in front of you, but very excited to be zooming in front of you. And to talk to you a little bit about Tommy's Express. Tommy's Express is actually out of Grand Rapids or Holland, Michigan. And the family actually started, has been in the car wash business since 1969. Tommy's Express is the franchise version, and they've got about 85 locations across the United States and have started to slowly go to the, what we would consider the east side of the state if we're over there and coming into the Detroit area. And I was lucky enough to purchase a franchise and go through all of their application process for Royal Oak. So very excited to, again, to be in front of you. We think, or I personally think that this is just a really dynamic brand to be a part of. So in the car wash industry, you really haven't seen a whole lot of innovation in a lot of years. This car wash is very much environmental friendly on a lot of different levels that I'll try to touch on. It is technology-driven. So in what we show as three lanes, the first lane that goes closest to the building, that is the only lane that if you were to have any conversation with someone, if you were looking to sign up for a monthly membership or if you were looking to just pay in cash, you would go to that lane. The other lanes are all automated lanes. So almost, we, under 10% of our business really runs cash. About 60% of it runs off of our app, and the rest runs just straight credit card. So the efficiencies that we have, it reads your license plate as you drive through. So it's not where we have heavy human, we have to rely on a lot of different factors from that standpoint. It is very efficient to the point where it will recognize which plate was read first and that particular gatelet opened up. So as you see the three, and you wonder how do they determine which one, which car goes next? That's how that works. The experience itself is very unique. Tommy's is, it has a tunnel system that actually sits in the middle of the building. So the building is mostly glass, and that's for the environmentally friendly portion of taking in the sunlight. So during the business hours, we really don't run many lights off. In the winter months, we're going to have some period that we would utilize them. But for the most part, we have a glass side, and we have our glass roof that allows the sunlight to come in. We really recapture that and it really take advantage of that. So as you enter the Tommy's and you're coming in, we have a conveyor belt system. The best way to explain how a conveyor belt system works is to use the example of Detroit Metro Airport. Any, any of you that have been in the metro airport and have seen the, what I call the flat escalator that takes you across the terminal and you can help lock on it or you could just stand on it, that's very similar to what we have. So as you pull up, you're not, no one's guiding you, telling you to turn your tire a little bit this way or anything from that standpoint. You'll actually just drive right up on the conveyor belt. It takes your car and it just, you go right through the system. Our system can run somewhere, we have the ability to speed it up or slow down that belt based off if we need to. The average car wash, I would say, is between, you know, roughly 60 to 90 seconds. But 90 seconds is a safe, is really a safe bet that that's kind of what we're running things at. Again, we can speed that up if traffic was heavier or we can slow it down if need be. And why would you slow it down if we're having some slow issues exiting or going under Woodward or anything from that standpoint? So we have all that ability to control. The system is really set up with three employees. We have one employee that sits in what we call our command center. And if you were looking at the plan, the command center would be, as you're going into the car wash, entering the tunnel, it's immediately to the left, the little bump out that's there. So we have one person that, that sits and dresses anyone that's coming in and again, would like to pay with cash, pay with a credit card there or looking to find out more information and sign up for a membership. So we have a person that sits there. We have another person that stands and looks out. It's all glass and it looks out at the car wash itself. It's all glass and it looks out at the car wash itself. They're maintaining and full-time watching to make sure everything's smooth. And then we have a third person that kind of sits at the glass doorway in case anyone does need any help entering. Or they go through and they're just kind of making sure that the car wash is running operationally safe from that standpoint. So really at a max time, we have three employees. When someone goes through that car wash, again, we don't have anyone that directs you in. So it takes you in and then at the very end of the car wash, we don't have anyone that towel dries your car. Once you're done, we have a system that, that has a built-in towel dry system that's electronic and then it blows. And then you leave and exit the car wash and then you would exit towards Woodward and move on. Nobody is, is handling your car or drying your car. Nobody's upselling you. We don't have any full version of any, you know, interior cleaning or anything from that standpoint. So it is really a technology-driven car wash. Unlike probably anyone that's seen anything in the area recently, other than what has opened up a little bit north of us in Auburn Hills, which is another Tommy's. So it is very, very user-friendly. We have customers that the bulk of our customers use our app system. And they are also on our membership program, so they can come as often as they want and they can, they come through. As far as, you know, anything with the water usage, I do want to touch on that because I think it's very important. We have a, a tank system. And in our tank system, it's basically consists of four tanks that sit inside the car wash underneath. And that is a water purifying system. So as you go through, imagine we have a pit that sits down right through the runway. And as you through, all the water runs off your car and goes back into this recirculating pit. All the water is clean. So all the debris would, would sit into one tank and then the water is pushed on, all the oil raises. And then that sits into another tank and then it goes through until it's purified and then we reuse that water. We do get some, any runoff that would happen, would happen in that fourth tank and it's just overflow. And then that would, it's already purified water that would go back. And that's the only thing that really touches the sewer system, along with some that at the end of the tunnel, you're going to get some runoff and some different things there. But not typical to a runoff that you would see in any of the, a lot of the other car washes. So if you're familiar with, in the winter time, you're getting your car washed, if you're right up on Woodward and you're coming out, sometimes it can be ice there because of the buildup of the water. We won't have that because of our pit system that we have in there. So we recirculate a lot of water. I know Dennis touched on, you know, how environmentally friendly the water system is. But, you know, we really use about twenty-two gallons per car. If you were washing your car at home, on average, you're going to use about a hundred gallons. An older car wash is using pretty typical to about a hundred gallons also. So it is very, very environmental friendly. Our lighting, I touched on the sunlight that we do use. All of our lights are LED. They're all on a, on a very sophisticated timing system. So those lights are on when our, our business hours and then they shut off. So it's very unique in, in that sense. We're not relying on someone shutting off the lights or anything from that standpoint. We're able to go ahead and, and, and program all of that. So very unique from that standpoint also. So the last thing I'd like to touch on is just a little bit about Water Mission. The founders of the, of Tommy's have a great background on, on giving back to the community and everything from that standpoint. They partnered with Water Mission several years ago. And the reason they did it is they were, it was brought to their attention just the need in developing countries, a lot of the water systems that they don't have. So they thought this was a great partnership and, you know, when they went and visited and, and did a lot of things there, they started donating to Water Mission. And this isn't a small donation. They donate, you know, at this point, the, the donation has been well over hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think this year alone, they're approaching a hundred thousand dollar mark at just slightly halfway through the year. So they, they donate a lot to that. And again, Water Mission is developing countries that don't have a water system. They don't have drinking water. They don't have sanitary water for restrooms or anything from that standpoint. So, you know, the donation that they do from that standpoint has been a very good partnership. And then there's also some mission work that they also donating time and going there. Which is something that we'll look into also from our standpoint as we start to develop and get more involved in the brand. So it's an exciting partnership from, from that standpoint. So.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else in the applicant?
No, I think I'll turn it over to Eric and Eric will talk a little bit about the site and.
I appreciate your time. All right. Thanks for having us. Eric Williams with Stonefield Engineering Design, address is six zero seven Shelby Street. I'm going to try to keep it short and sweet. I know Tim has already touched on, you know, the, the overall site layout, but maybe just put some numbers behind, you know, some of the improvements that we are making. So to start within the Woodward right of way, you know, if, if you've driven by recently, obviously, you know, that parking area has seen better days, you know, some busted up concrete curb. The asphalt, you know, needs to be, to be cleaned up and, and working with the planning department. You know, there, there's a few different things that we are looking to do there. We're going to remove about twenty-six hundred square feet of pavement area. It's going to be replaced with landscape. And really what we like about that is it's going to define that corner. If you drove out there today, it would be really easy for somebody to almost drive straight in off of Woodward into these public parking spaces. And by better defining that curb line, it's going to force people to slow down and really make a decision whether they're, they're going to enter, you know, the parking route or if they're going to continue downward. Along with that, we're going to be repaving all of the asphalt there and obviously cleaning up. Cliff is making a huge investment here. So he's, you know, really putting his, his best foot forward and, you know, we want a high quality site. The other change to the right of way there that we are making, if you entered the site through the alley today, you would be able to almost drive straight through the parking lot and then exit directly onto Woodward. So what, you know, one of the recommendations from, from the planning department was to close that egress point. So effectively what we've done is created, you know, one ingress point adjacent to Hunter and then one egress point just south of Normandy for this entire block of commercial properties. So again, that's going to really calm some of the, the traffic that we see on Woodward and focus it into two very specific locations. So as we enter the site, you know, if you make the decision to turn in off of Woodward, you know, one advantage that we do have here is the three stacking lanes. And by forcing vehicles to make an one hundred and eighty return, it's really going to slow them down. You know, they're not going to come in at a high speed as Cliff mentioned. There is a huge membership percentage in terms of, we're going to have returned customers. So they're going to be very well aware that they need to slow down before they enter the site and, and come to a very reasonable speed to make that one hundred and eighty return. Then obviously they're going to go through the pay stations and continue counterclockwise through the building. You know, as Dennis had mentioned, we are, we are requesting, I guess, your approval or recommendation for approval to remove the bypass lane. If you look at any typical car wash today, you know, it's really not something you see, no matter what brand you look at. And, you know, obviously Tommy's has been successful in what they're doing. And at no point would they typically recommend providing a bypass lane and they're very comfortable with the escape lane that we are proposing through the alley. So we see it as, as a good way to, to ensure we can stack adequate vehicles on site, but also keep, you know, efficient flow. So if somebody did happen to go through and their vehicle's too large to actually enter the wash, they could simply exit out and they wouldn't have the need to back up, reverse, try to turn around or do anything else like that. As you continue through the car wash and you come to the egress point, you know, a big, a very, I guess, an important part that Cliff did mention is there is no post-wash detailing. So, so folks that exit the car wash will be free flowing out of the site. And, and with the majority of the traffic going or coming from northbound Woodward, we would anticipate that, you know, a high percentage would exit left out of that wash lane and continue back onto Woodward. I, I think the important piece to note is, is in terms of any queuing on site or, you know, a lot of times you'll see left-hand turn conflicts in parking lots. Just based on the circulation of the site and the egress points, there, there's a really clean and efficient flow through the property. To touch briefly on the landscaping, as it sits today, the, the site is about ninety-eight percent impervious. I think there's four hundred square feet of landscape area, plus or minus. We're proposing a twenty-seven hundred square foot increase and bringing that percentage to eighty-five percent. And this doesn't include the landscaping improvements within the public right of way. And as you can tell from the landscaping plan, a lot of this is focused on that Hunter Avenue right of way. And what we like about this is that it does kind of soften that entrance and exit for the residents of Hunter Ave. You know, the building is stepped back now and, and, you know, is a, is a much more aesthetically pleasing entry and exit to that particular roadway. The last piece that I would like to touch on is stormwater management. Obviously Cliff spoke on the reclamation tanks and, and the high level of efficiency. Everybody's seen the flooding as it played throughout Detroit, Metro Detroit. So we do intend to comply with the stormwater management ordinance and obviously that'll be metering the discharge from the site. As it sits today, there is unrestricted flow into the storm sewers into the right of way. And so we do intend to, you know, reduce that flow rate and adhere to the. That, Dennis, would you like to?
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Chairman will certainly be available to answer any questions when the Planning Commission discusses this matter. Just to wrap it up, this is a very exciting project. It's visually appealing. The worst thing that can affect a commercial or residential neighborhood is empty building sites or empty buildings. We don't want that to happen anymore. We want to bring a very dynamic franchise onto Woodward. And we believe this is the right location for it. We do believe we meet or exceed all the special use conditions. I won't go through them. I put them in my letter, but we'll be glad to discuss them as the evening progresses. And we want to thank you for your time and we look forward to further discussion with you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the petitioners, the engineer, the attorney, before we go to the public comment from, questions from the commissioners? Or the applicants and their team? Commissioner Douglas.
So as I look at this and, and calculate based on what you've said, if there are, I mean, if you do have the six or the three lanes for, and forego the, the escape lane, I mean, you could conceivably have like, you know, twenty-plus cars waiting to go through the car wash on a good day. And if it takes twenty seconds per car and if you're car number twenty-one in those three lanes, it's going to be a half an hour before you get into the car wash itself. Making a case for having that escape lane. How do you, what's your experience in your other location? And, and, you know, the concern is obviously cars backed up on Woodward. How do you ameliorate that?
Can you hear me all right?
Yes. Well, a little bit of an echo there. Try again.
Good. Okay. So it's a great question. And when you think about it, if you look at the inside of our tunnel, we actually have roughly one, two, three, four, five, between five and six cars, you know, that are, that are entering. So if you were that first car that's entering the, the car wash, that will take you sixty to ninety seconds, depending on what we have that speed at. So when you think about the, the timing, you would actually count back sixty, you know, so if you just say it's a minute and, and you're at, at that first spot. If we were to count back, one lane could be one, two, three, four, five, six, you know, seven, it really, eight minutes before you're at the, at, at the queue to go in on a, on a sixty-second belt run. That's not including the other two lanes. So you would add those lanes up also. So we don't get that. It's a very, very smooth, what you're seeing on the stacking, we don't really typically run into the need to have that much stacking, but we meet the ordinance and we were very concerned with any thought process of anything backing up on the Woodward that we've seen in some of the other drive-throughs or anything in there. So the third lane was really put in there for a comfort. But we don't really, the amount of that escape lane, we don't utilize it. I mean, it, it is, this is very typical in, in a Tommy's where you have the only escape lane that kind of is right, you know, kind of at the, the turn to go in to the tunnel, that escape lane is only used in the event that someone came through and their tires were just too big or their height was just a little too tall and they, they were able to get past us. So in, in that happens, if that happens, you know, once every other day, that would be a lot. It's just not something that, that happens very often. So, you know, we, we could kind of go either way in regards to that third lane. Is, as for stacking for a comfort level that we would, you know, very much exceed the stacking requirement. Or, you know, we could turn that into landscape or anything from that standpoint. So. But again, we really did that for the stacking more than anything.
So, so the trade-off here is if you have two waiting lanes, there could be a risk of backups on Woodward, but we get a screening wall along the, the property line and potentially some landscaping. Or we forego the screening wall and landscaping and decrease the possibility of backups on Woodward. Is that the, what we're talking about here?
It, it is what we're talking about. And, you know, from an operation standpoint, we don't have any concern from, from, you know, investing and putting it into the property and making sure that this operations will run sufficiently. We have zero concerns of a backup on Woodward at all. The, the stacking that we would have off of two lanes is, is more than sufficient from our standpoint. But again, yes, to, to your point, absolutely. It could be for a comfort of more stacking or it could be for more landscape. But there is really no need for, for a drive-through lane from our standpoint. And if you think about it, you know, anyone who would turn in off Woodward, there's still the buffer there where they're going to to see if there were any cars and if they decided to make a change, the easier change they're going to have is to continue going down and then to jump back on Woodward versus even going in. If they did make the turn, you know, there is the, the, the straight through that they could do from that standpoint. But again, we just don't see that. You know, they get very comfortable with our process and our timing. And it's one of those things where even if there's a line, they understand how fast that moves.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioners? Okay, I have one or two. I am presuming this is a standard building design. Is that correct?
Yeah, you're unmuted. Yeah, sorry. I'm quick enough getting the mute off. So yes, it is correct.
Is that, is this, the size of the building a standard size?
Yeah, there's a, they, they can adjust the building. There's a couple, just depending on the size of the property, they can go bigger. Like if they had, if there was a gas station attached to it, they have one that the building can increase in length. And it really, the only difference is that it would hold more cars. From that standpoint, there's more washing going on at once. So.
So the, the, the standard building design has a canopy with three lanes. That's how it's configured, correct?
Most of them are really run two lanes. The third lane is an option, but most of them in Michigan would run two lanes. So.
All right. So in this case, you have one cashier attended lane and then two automated lanes, right?
Correct. And you could also go in the, the automate the cashier lane and, and still, if you had the app and it read your thing, it would still go up from that standpoint. But if you stopped and had, and it didn't scan your license plate as, you know, an app customer, then it would, you would interact with our, our person at the window.
All right. I assume that the, the site plan is, is different for, for different sites. This is sort of a unique site. There probably isn't another one on this type of site. So each site plan is different, but the buildings are generally one of these two configurations.
That's absolutely correct. And, and to even, that, we can feel very comfortable on the operation side that we know, you know, operationally that this is a very sound and, and it will operate very smooth from our standpoint.
All right. All right. Any other questions for the petitioner and their team? All right. Oh, Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, just real quick, I heard the, the, what we'll call the bypass lane, right? Was the vocabulary we were using. That's recommended. That's, who, whose idea is a bypass lane? What does that come from? Is that a city thing? Is that a city thing?
I hear a lot of feedback there.
Do, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. That is a requirement of the ordinance in Royal Oak for, or not necessarily requirement, but recommendation, I believe Tim could clarify that. For fast, in particular, it has to do most commonly with fast food businesses where they typically have a bypass lane or something similar to it. So that's why we included that on the site plan.
Okay, good. And then, so if there were, in lieu of that bypass lane, let me see if I understand, I think I followed Cliff. If you're moving, you know, down, up Woodward, I guess we'll say, going north, you make the turn towards the car wash, you say, oh no, there's too many people there. You have the option of going down what is the state-owned right-of-way there along Woodward to get back on Woodward. Or you can actually turn up into the property of the car wash, discover, yeah, that feels like too many people. And, and instead of continuing the right turn around to get in line, you could go straight towards the alley in front of the exit of the car wash and, and get off the property that way. Once you get in line, then you're in line if there's no bypass lane until you get, you know, to the front of that. And then you could still kind of skip the car wash and just slide out that other exit on the south end of the property.
Well, Paul, or Mr. Curtis, the way that would work is quite frankly, the, the, if you do enter onto the property, the right thing would be to use the bypass lane then. You would not pay, explain that you're, you've changed your mind and then you would probably go out the alley. We would not recommend that you, you go straight across. That would, there is that opening there that is a potential third route off if you decide to change your mind. But the two preferred, one would be to continue on the buffer area on the state right-of-way. The other would be to get it, actually get into the bypass lane. And there would be signage to that effect. And then you could go out that, that short distance. Once you make the turn to the alley, make a right onto Hunter and get back onto Woodward.
Yeah, but I was, I was trying to ask in, if there were no bypass lane there, because I think I understood staff recommending a, I think thirty-inch wall along the sidewalk there to get some buffer between cars and pedestrians. However, I, I think I also heard in the presentation that with that third lane, there is not room for that thirty-inch wall, is that correct?
That's correct. As a practical matter, if somebody got in line and changed their mind or got a phone call and had an emergency or something like that, they'll still be able to use that short exit at the turnaround as you go into the entrance. That will still be there and they could just simply explain that they have to make that move, they have to, they have to leave. So as a practical matter, that will still exist. Again, as Mr. Luddy explained, we have a lot of repeat customers because of the, you know, special customer programs that they have. So they'll get used to the configuration and even those who don't, that would still be an option for them. They could merely talk to the service person at the beginning and they could, you know, cut off into that lane and depart the premises. So the, it'll still be an effective bypass lane even if you take it out.
Based really quickly on that, from, you got feedback. So when we get, you got to turn. So what happens when, when, when someone turns in there? They're, they're, they're either going to make that turn to come into the right based off the traffic or they're going to go straight past on the, on the, the city-owned or that right-of-way area that, that Mr. Curtis is talking about. We will get some that would, will just go straight through like Mr. Curtis is saying as an option that would go straight through and go to the alley in front of the exit and then turn and take that right turn onto Hunter. The escape lane or anything that, that Dennis is, is mentioning, those are really unique situations and they really are reserved for situations where someone is not going through the car wash because of a problem with their car size. Tires are too big, they won't fit on the conveyor or it's just too high. That's where the escape lane that you see going into the alley would, would be used. Again, that is used very, very infrequently. So in a worst-case scenario, could we use that as someone who turned in and needed to, to leave the car wash? We certainly could. But that's going to be a, really a third, third resort for what we believe a customer would do. They're going to turn in off of Woodward, make their decision at that point to either turn in or they're going to continue to go. And if they do turn in and they had a secondary thought, they're probably going to go straight and, and go out from that standpoint. But we believe that the bulk of that business that, that may not come into us is going to go straight on, on the, on the bypass lane or the, the area of focus on Woodward. So hopefully that clarifies it a little long-winded, sorry.
All right, I have a follow-up question myself. The site plan is a little bit, I'm not a hundred percent clear on it. What is between the third lane and the sidewalk under this plan? It looks like a little lawn area. You're on mute there. Mute.
Okay, so Eric just was explaining that to us from the engineering side that it's a, can you repeat that, Eric?
Yep, so we have a concrete curb, obviously, to keep any vehicles from encroaching onto the sidewalk. And then there's about a foot of landscaped area or, you know, it may turn into gravel or something that is low maintenance is what the intent would be.
So very little bit of green belt along that, that side there right now with that. If that lane was removed, we would be able to significantly increase the, the landscape on that side.
Okay, I, but a foot, there's a, right now, there's a foot of space between the third lane and the sidewalk that you're determining what to do with.
And that, that's on Woodward, not on, correct?
On the Woodward.
That's on Woodward, correct? So, so in other words, there would be the sidewalk, there'd be about a foot and then of, of some type of a green area there where there was grass or some flowers or some small shrubs, not a lot of area, obviously. And then we would have the wall that would be a protector from that standpoint, the way it sits right now on the Woodward side.
On the Woodward side, there is a wall?
Yes. Correct? No, there is not. Sorry, it's just a concrete curb right now.
Concrete curb. All right, I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused why there wouldn't be room for a, a wall if you have about a foot.
We, Eric, we could, right?
I mean, it's going to be tight.
It would be tight to do the wall there with about a foot space there with the, with the curb, because you're still going to need the curb, obviously. And so you're only dealing with about a foot that we would have to build that wall. So it would be pretty tight and it would probably be right up on that sidewalk.
All right, I, I just wondered because it's also tight to put landscaping in a foot wide. I just, the comment was made that there wasn't room. I just wanted a little clarification, okay. Is Commissioner Douglas?
So what if instead of a wall, it were a fence? And I just, my mental picture around town, we've seen some developers who are using fences with horizontal metal slats that are quite attractive. Would that take up less space, still give you an attractive, you know, protective frontage there on Woodward and allow you to have that third customer lane?
Eric? So Eric from engineering is saying that we could definitely do that. And so we would, we would be, have no issue with that and would definitely do that. That's what the commission would like.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, I believe we would move to the public comment. Ms. Wang, we have some public comments on, on this agenda item?
Chairperson Casada, members of the Planning Commission. Yes, there are three public comments that specifically address this issue. An additional three that while they are addressing various issues, they do also address this agenda topic, sometimes not by name, but by referencing E1, which is how it is numbered on the agenda. At this time, I'm going to share my screen and play those comments for you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Campbell. I'm calling in reference to case number SP two-one dash zero-eight dash one-three at three-one-eight-hundred Woodward Avenue. I have concerns about the proposed car wash. One would be traffic and the amount of traffic that it will potentially produce on Woodward, blocking the end of our street potentially, having any overflow traffic coming down our block. Any proposed signage that the car wash may have, who's going to monitor that? You know, i.e. stop signs, no turns, do not enter. We have children that live on the block that we need to be concerned about and the extra traffic that this proposed car wash is going to bring. There's also noise. We're going to have noise that is unnecessary. We have a quiet neighborhood. We, we have an adjacent property that we already deal with a lot of noise. Adding another business potentially, we're going to have more noise, not only from their regular business starting at seven AM to nine PM. Those are my concerns, thank you for your time.
My name is Cynthia McAvoy and I reside at three-seven-two-two Hunter Avenue. I am commenting on case number SP two-one dash zero-eight dash one-three. Proposal for Tommy's Express Car Wash at three-one-eight-zero-zero Woodward Avenue. I have reviewed the proposal and I am opposed to it for the following reasons. Number one, noise. The noise generated by water pumps, hydraulics, back motors, air dryers and blowers would be significant. A typical, a typical car wash generates eighty-five decibels. In comparison, a lawnmower generates ninety decibels. Additionally, the wind blows from the southwest, which would further carry the noise over our homes to the east. Our quality of life will be diminished seven days a week from seven AM to nine PM. Number two, pollution. Overflow water will inevitably, inevitably seep into the ground and chemicals will discharge in the air. Number three, lights. According to the proposal, vehicle headlights in the stacking lanes will shine down Hunter Avenue and my home during their final turn to enter the car wash. Number four, barrier wall waiver. The plans indicate no barrier found wall along the alley. This omission will negatively impact the apartment building residence whose entrances face the alley. And lastly, number five, traffic. Hunter Avenue already experiences significant traffic. Vehicles and commercial trucks use the alleys and our street as a shortcut to barrel, barrels and vines, which is located on the south side of Hunter. Another in-and-out facility would surely add to the traffic on our narrow residential street. In closing, I hope the Planning Commission will consider these concerns for the benefit of its residents. I thank you for your time.
Deborah Harrison-Low regarding case number SP two-one dash zero-eight dash thirteen at thirty-one-eight-hundred Woodward Avenue. I object to the special land use permit being considered for Tommy's Express based on four concerns. I have a concern about public safety for residents along Hunter Avenue. Since the opening of wine and barrels speeding in excess of forty miles per hour in a twenty-five mile per hour zone has been observed by pacing and radar. These are typically non-residents cutting through in order to skip the light on Woodward. Since the traffic flow from the auto wash is designed to keep traffic flowing through Woodward, the concern is traffic coming from Coolidge and Normandy, cutting through Hunter and Chester, speeding to get to the car wash. This is a public park on the street and these streets, the public park on these streets and many other residents house young children. Furthermore, a few of the children are on the spectrum, which increases danger. A car wash on this corner will pose a significant public safety risk that is not necessary. We have already had one child struck, we do not need another. My second concern is sound pollution from the auto car wash. Cliff Lundy was questioned at the initial public hearing on August third. He nor his development team were able to provide the decibel level of the auto wash strikers. The decibel level of the Lake Orion location of Tommy's Express from a sixty-six-foot distance averaged seventy-five decibels with a peak of ninety-four decibels. The average sound level from the closest dwelling on Hunter Avenue will exceed seventy-five decibels, which is in violation of the City of Royal Oak Code, Article seven, Chapter seven-seventy-nine-four-A. This facility will cause unnecessary disruption of the peace within the immediate surrounding property along Hunter Avenue and Normandy Road. Significant additional sound damping measures will be needed to be put in place for this facility to meet city code. Third, I expect the traffic flow into the car wash to back onto Woodward, making access to Woodward for the residents of Hunter Avenue more dangerous. This could create a similar situation as witnessed at Jack's Car Wash on the corner of Woodward Avenue and Eleven Mile Road. The subject property does not seem large enough to allow for efficient traffic flow with this proposed type of facility. Finally, we anticipate monetary property damages along the affected street within the residential zone. The noise, public safety issue and traffic issue will contribute to making the surrounding neighborhood less attractive and desirable, contributing to property damages in the form of home values depreciation as well as loss of business in the plaza where access will be impeded. I hope you would please take these concerns into consideration of what the special land use permit based on these objections for myself and the visiting community. If you do ultimately provide the, the special use permit to Tommy's Express, I would hope you would at least consider to protect the surrounding community by restricting access to Hunter Avenue from Woodward Avenue, requiring the franchise to install additional sound damping structures, adding significant green belt around the car wash, allowing the variance to remove the alley parking and place green belts and limiting hours of operation to eight AM to six PM. Thank you very much.
Hi, this is Walter Ochelik. I, I'm calling to comment on the agenda items, E2, E3, F2 and E1. I'd say no on the law, please. That's it. Not going to go on about it, but I, I, I don't like any of this. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Carrie Fox and I am calling to encourage you to vote no on several of your agenda items for tonight's meeting. I am opposed to the agenda item for the minimum requirement of off-street parking. Agenda item E2. I am opposed to agenda item E3, building heights and, you know, all to do with multifamily zoning. I'm opposed to agenda item F2 for the five-year review of the master plan. I don't think that I would encourage that until after an election at, at most. And also I am opposed to the car wash where Pier One Imports used to be. That's agenda item E1. So I hope you will take the public comments into consideration and at least notify the public before you go ahead and do these things. The, the fact that you want to do them under the cover of darkness is a little unsettling. Thank you.
My name is Albert Nesbit. I live at three-six-one-six Yorba Linda Boulevard, Royal Oak. My remarks are related to the commission's agenda item E1, E3, F2, the rezoning of the entire city. This is just a bad idea on multiple levels. The Woodward corridor is our neighborhood backyard and putting five-story buildings in our neighborhoods will have a negative impact on the quality of life in Royal Oak. The boundaries of Royal Oak are fixed. The vast majority of the land in Royal Oak is single-family dwellings. The current master plan calls for the number one goal to preserve our neighborhoods. Currently, many of the businesses in Royal Oak use the neighborhoods as employee parking so as to allow for more client parking on Woodward. We don't need to have the required spaces reduced. I understand there are cases where variances need to be considered, but that's the job of the Planning Commission. You don't change the specifications. You don't change the specifications just because developers continually ask for exceptions. Have studies been done to look at the available spaces that exist in multifamily units in mid-December, 3 o'clock in the morning, when the majority of people would be at home with cars parked in the lots? Our master plan is just fine the way it is. It must be reviewed every five years. We don't need to start this review early in the midst of this COVID-19 pandemic. I have always been a believer in Thomas Beetram Lance, the Director of Office of Management and Budget in the Jimmy Carter's 1977 administration. He was quoted in the newsletter of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, "The Nation's Business," May of '77. Bert Lance believes he can save Uncle Sam billions if he can get the government to adopt a simple motto. "If it ain't broke, don't fix it," he explains. The trouble with government, fixing things that aren't broken and not fixing things that are broken. You don't need a sledgehammer to crack an egg. Please vote no on these proposals. Thank you for your attention.
That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. All right, let's bring it. Gary, before you go on, I just would point out that there are 15 written comments that were added to the end of the packet that were received as part of that as well, voicing some of those, I think two of them were voicing support for the car wash proposal. One is, of my read of it, was suggesting alternatives, primarily that there be no parking along the alley. And then the other, the remaining ones were, I will characterize as being opposed for some of the reasons that were already laid out, noise, traffic, lights. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at all those. All right, thank you. Are there further questions for either Mr. Twain or the applicant before we start discussing the matter? And I pose that to the commissioners. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, could you please speak to the noise levels that you anticipate this establishment generating?
Certainly. So the noise level, the one comment was the volume at the vacuum. At the loudest point, the volume is a 90 decimal. But it certainly, as you get away from it, it drops significantly. So we would anticipate, from what we're looking at, is roughly being or having at the property lines of somewhere between 70 and 80 decimals. To kind of give you an example, and I couldn't find anything on what Woodward says, but a busy road that has multiple lanes going 55 miles an hour runs, or I'm sorry, 45 miles an hour, runs somewhere between 80 and 90 decimals. So at the property line, we don't, we will adhere to, you know, the Royal Oak noise ordinance for sure. And we don't anticipate any noise issue from that standpoint. Not that's going to exceed what's already there with Woodward.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up. Well, go ahead, Eric. Mr. Klooster?
Yes, can you speak to the proposed hours of operation as well?
Certainly. So the proposed hours are from 7:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. And once we're closed, the vacuums are also on a timer system, so they are not able, they would not be able to be used in any off-hours.
Okay, my follow-up question for the petitioner was you mentioned that for a heavy traffic, 45 miles an hour, you mentioned 80, 90 decibels. Is that 89 decibels at the point of generation or at some point or at the property line of the residential? I'm not sure what you were saying.
Yeah, so, and this is based off my experience and my looking up and trying to find a comparison to noise level of, you know, a multi-lane road that travels 45, that really does 50,000 cars, you know, a day, which is what Woodward does. So when we looked at that and we tried to compare, it would be at the, you know, at the edge of the road. So basically, you know, right at the, if you're looking at kind of the property line or right at the edge, or maybe where the sidewalk is, is where you would see that average of 80 to 90 decimals.
Okay, and for your example about the vacuum noise, when you said 70 to 80, is that your property line you're talking about?
Correct. So it would be 90 at the source. We also don't have too many. We only have four vacuums on the site and it's actually up against a wall that's already naturally built with the Chinese restaurant located right there. So from that standpoint, we, you know, from a neighborhood or Hunter kind of back, we don't, I mean, we're gonna, we'll probably be somewhere less than 70 from, as a result of vacuum noise at the property lines there.
All right. Okay, I have a question for Mr. Twain, if I don't, if you don't mind. So one of the speakers during the public comment there, the public input, mentioned, the speaker talked very fast, but they mentioned ordinance. They said that at 66 feet, 75 decibels was in violation of the ordinance. Is that, can you tell, can you speak to that? What was that person talking about? Is that correct?
I honestly don't know what they were referring to. There are decimal requirements in the ordinance at certain times of the day. They're in ordinance, I believe it's 77094. They relate to noise levels between those hours of the day. And I believe they're all measured at the property line. Some of the problem you run into when we've, when the police department has gone out on noise complaints is make a distinction between background noise, whether it's the road or there is a source similar to a vacuum. And so you got to have some expertise in order to make that evaluation and decision on what the noise is. So I'm not really sure what she was referring to in terms of the distance.
All right. Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners or the applicant, their team, or Mr. Twain? All right, I have one. I'm going to go back to the applicant here. You have the bypass lane on the site plan and we were given a supplemental, a set of documents, I think today or yesterday or whatever, I think it might have been yesterday, that shows the site plan. And the bypass lane turns directly towards the apartment, one-story apartment building across the alley. I wonder if there was thought about, you're already approaching into the setback. I wonder if there was thought about tapering that bypass lane a little more south down the alley so you could put a screen wall on your own property. Was that considered? If you understand what I'm saying. You can't, you can't put a screen wall up now because your lane, as cars go into the car wash, they're pointing eastward and that's where the bypass outlet is. You can't put a screen wall there. And then it looks, it looks across towards the apartment building where the cars are parked. You can't put a screen wall there. I'm just wondering, given the, given the fact that there's no potential to put a screen wall there and your, and car lights would be shining directly at the apartment, did you consider running the bypass lane more southerly than it is?
Absolutely. And, you know, one of the big things with a lot of the residents on Hunter was the concern of directing traffic towards, you know, the residential street. So the thought process was force the traffic to go towards Normandy, obviously the more commercial thoroughfare. So that was how we arrived at that particular layout. Now, we could absolutely look at reorienting it and kind of directing traffic south towards Hunter. Or maybe it's even still having a no-right-turn sign there and having the lights point away from that building. I think that is something that we could be flexible in. The one piece that we just have to ensure is that we don't lose parking, you know, on that side of the alley.
Yeah, I think you could probably pull the parking to the north and still put a fence there or some sort of a screening wall there. So that's, that's.
Yeah, I, you know, and Cliff is kind of nodding at me right now and I think that's absolutely something that we could work with staff on and come to, you know, a reasonable agreement, whether it's some sort of fencing like we're planning to put along Woodward or, you know, enhanced landscaping and maybe reorient how that exits into the alley.
I mean, you're going to have a number of cars. If you're successful, you're going to have a number of cars. And if you're open to 9 o'clock during the big part of the year, you're going to have headlights lined up and pointing in certain directions. And right now, you don't have screening and you're pointing right at the apartment. I can imagine that's, might be an issue for people. And you just talked about maybe horizontal fencing. So I myself think those might be considerations.
Absolutely. I think, you know, Cliff wants to be a good neighbor at the end of the day. I know he's already met with the folks that operate that and we're definitely open to that.
All right. Any other questions for the petitioner or Mr. Twain from the commissioners? Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, we have seen with the Starbucks south of this location on Woodward, issues obviously with traffic backing up onto the street. And we've have felt or believed that we didn't have recourse to make that stop. Mr. Twain, do we have any recourse? I mean, if an establishment has an approved site plan and the site plan says traffic won't back up on Woodward and it does, is there anything we can do?
Well, I think someone's going to have to declare it a public nuisance in order to create a violation on it and determine that it's a nuisance in order to deal with it at that point. I don't believe that's been done, if you're referring to Starbucks. But yes, if you approve a special land use and it's determined to be of some violation, you have an opportunity to make them make corrections.
So, so just to be clear, we can write a special land use, sorry, I said site plan a moment ago, a special land use that says you will not allow traffic to back up onto Woodward? And if it does, we can, we write a condition that closes them down?
Well, it's obviously a legal action to close them down at that point. And what your basis would be, that's why I said it would have to be declared some sort of public nuisance and have evidence of it being a public nuisance in order to do so. And I believe they'd also have an opportunity to mitigate it before you went that far in terms of redesign or operational issues.
Who gets, who gets to declare a public nuisance?
It sounds like a Mr. List question. I don't know if Mark was getting on or not.
Looks like it.
Yeah.
Mr. List, any comment? Nope, there you go. Mr. List, you seem to be going mute to non-mute. I don't know if you heard the question. The question is, how, who gets to determine or bring an action for a public nuisance?
Well, I can speak to the way they've done, done in the past in terms of motels. There's, there's, there's code enforcement action, there's police action, there's documentation of violations of something. And so it takes a lot of resources and time to document that something's a nuisance. That's how, some of you may recall that around a while, how the city closed down some of the motels. It's not just simply a statement that this is a public nuisance. You've got to provide quite a bit of evidence and support materials to do so.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Apparently, I didn't have my camera plugged in. There's a number of things the city could do, nothing that I want to get into detail, but a nuisance action would have to go to the circuit court. The other action the city could take is essentially self-help by addressing tickets or site plan violations to the facility and take it to the local district court. Most of the time, though, that we take those type of actions to the district court would give people an opportunity to either mitigate the issues or to or to seek variances, in this case, that wouldn't need any variances. So there's a couple of actions to it, but what Mr. Twain said, the most robust way would be to take an action to the circuit court and ask for a declaratory judgment that the business is creating a nuisance. Nuisances, though, are generally hard to prove in court.
Yeah, assume there'd be some steps that would be taken before we ran off and filed a lawsuit, I assume.
Sure. I mean, my recommendation would normally, in a situation, would be to start issuing tickets first.
All right. Thank you.
Well.
All right. Other, other questions along those lines or any others as we are preparing to discuss this among the commissioners? And we can always go back and ask more questions once we start talking. So let's, seeing no more questions at the, at the moment, let's bring this to the commissioners for discussion or a potential motion or whatever you'd like to, like to address here between the commissioners.
I'm willing, I'm willing to jump in. So one of the concerns is, of course, traffic. And we often hear about the infamous, apparently, Starbucks on 13 Mile. And, and I think there's a little bit of apples and oranges between the addictive nature of caffeine and then the desire to get a car wash. I don't know about you. I like a clean car, but I need a cup of something. So I don't anticipate, you know, if it's backed up, you know, if it's busy, I expect people to just keep it moving and come back around when it's not busy as opposed to sitting out on Woodward, screwing up traffic over a car wash the way they might over a cup of coffee. Anyway, that's one of my thoughts about traffic. Secondly, there's this discussion about decibels and that is an interesting discussion to me. And I wonder if there are some mitigation to noise measures that are possible if the, if the group that's before us, the petitioners here, are aware. Is there any way to dampen the noise of car washes? And I think we talked a little bit about vacuums and I assume we're talking about the vacuums outside against that wall, you know, the vacuum out the backseat vacuums. But I didn't hear much about blowers and, you know, the machinery inside the building. And I'm just, has anyone ever faced what it is to try to mitigate noise from a car wash? Because I haven't.
That sounds like a question made for the petitioners there. Have you?
Let me go first.
Have you done that? Have you looked at, are there options to reduce noise that you've been presented by Tommy's or have you looked into that?
Yeah, first, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Curtis, first, I'm going to let Cliff handle some of the more details on that. Let's keep in mind with respect to the car wash operation that we are proposing. We have the end of the car wash where the blowers are as far away from the neighborhood as we can get it. And pursuant to the special ordinance you're working with tonight, we have the four vacuums as far away as possible. We can't get them any farther on the site plan. They're stuck away on the northwest corner. We only have four vacuums. The super wash has six. Jack's Car Wash, I believe, has twelve or thirteen, as I showed on the comparison chart. With the other two car washes on Woodward, both of those, the vacuums are open towards, you know, open air, so to speak. Ours, you'll have the building between the vacuums and the residential neighborhood that diffuses noise tremendously as well as the fact that it's right up against that wall for the Chinese restaurant, which my understanding with decibels is or noise, a lot of time it travels right up the closest barrier and will go right up into the air. So I just wanted to point out a couple, you know, factual type things. And I'm gonna hand it over to Cliff for maybe more of the detailed analysis. Thanks.
So to comment a little bit more, so to comment a little bit more on that, the decimals, to kind of give you an idea, at at the outside of the drive would be roughly the low eighties, probably eighty-two, eighty-three from previous studies that we've had on Tommy's. At the entrance, it's it's also in the low eighties from that standpoint. So and again, that's right outside of it. So as you start to move from that, it drops substantially. So it would continue to drop in the distance from there, so.
It, just looking at, if I may, looking at the site plan, I'm not exactly sure what I'm looking at. These vacuums are on some sort of an arm or are they next to the wall? How are they, how, if I want to vacuum out my car, what am I, what am I utilizing?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I had mine volume down, so I missed the first part, but I believe the how how do our vacuums operate? So they are on an arm, so there is a, there's a motorized centralized system that is very dynamic and it's sound softening and everything inside of that make, you know, area that they sit. And then the arm would go out and then that's what you would use to get the vacuum in the inside of the car. So the actual noise and the motor and everything would sit right up tight really against that building. And if you look at on the plan, you can kind of see there's a ball or it looks like a circle. That's where that motor would sit and that's where the noise would really come from.
Okay, and we we have a dumpster enclosure there between or to the, to the, to the east?
Yeah, so that that dumpster is almost in the same spot that it sits today on on the site. The difference is, is that I believe we're showing a compactor, so we can try to minimize the amount of pickup. So the compactor will allow us, it's a, it's a, you know, it compacts. And so it allows us a lot more efficiencies on the pickup from that standpoint, too.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation night. Thank you for the folks that called in to public comment. Some of the concerns that I had were expressed, some of the the answers I think have been given. Just a little bit from my point of view, I mean, from a noise perspective, and maybe this is more of a rhetorical question, if the noise is of a disturbance and it goes above our, you know, maximum decibel level, then, you know, the petitioner or this business, you know, that won't endure, will issue tickets to the business. I mean, there's an enforcement issue there. So if the noise goes above what's already required in our ordinances, I hope, you know, for the sake of the petitioner and neighbors, if that case doesn't happen, but if it does happen, I hope the petitioner and I hope the neighbors understand that we're gonna be on it like white on rice. I mean, that's, you know, part of the reason why we have laws and rules. And that's why you have architects and designers and fifty years of experience knowing how sound travels and all of these things. So but always that, that, you know, final safety net, I suppose, that that we can manage. You know, this is, in my opinion, this is an amenity. Cities need amenities, we need restaurants, we need grocery stores. We need parks, we need doctors' offices, and we need car washes. And, you know, some of the stuff I've been learning from our environmental advisory committee is that, you know, car washing, we do it in our driveway and we wash, it's kind of a nice fun thing to do. But we're putting a lot of chemicals and suds and stuff into the storm drain when we wash at home. And to the extent that we have a car wash here that enables people to quickly get a wash in an affordable way and the waters are captured, recycled, reused, and minimizes the impact to our lakes versus the alternative of washing at home or going to a different type of system, I think is an important thing to recognize in terms of, you know, a necessary amenity. And, you know, this place has been baking for three years. You know, there's some changes coming with retail commercialization. We have some other discussion topics we're talking about here later about, you know, how do we fight blight and revitalize Woodward and things of this nature? And so, you know, I think that that this is for all, as an amenity, as a car wash, it has a lot of benefits. I'm actually surprised, but, you know, when it comes to noise, I just want to be clear. The city, you know, maybe I shouldn't be saying this as a planning commissioner, but maybe more in my capacity as mayor. I mean, if it's loud, you know, we're gonna enforce it. So and I think the traffic concerns, I do agree with Mr. Curtis, apples and oranges. I mean, people are getting coffee every single day at Starbucks. And, you know, no, no offense to Starbucks drinkers, no offense, Mr. Curtis, I must be too cheap to spend six dollars for a cup of coffee and wait in line all morning for it, but, you know, that's an everyday thing. Rain, snow, shine, you know, whatever, maybe sunshine. Car washes, I, you know, I do expect, you know, a couple, few days here and there. You know, a real bright sunny day, the first day of spring, there might be a backup. But it's not something that's going to persist, you know, throughout the entire year. We don't see that with our other car washes. We may see on the first sunny day of the year, you know, somebody lined up. I won't mention the competitors or whatever, incriminate them or whatever, but yeah, I mean, that's, we we see that with other businesses, too. You know what I mean? Someone's offering a sale or a special restaurant deal. You know, you get some lineups from time to time, you know, I think like free donut day or something, some of those donut shops get lines up. So I'm really talking about is there a manageable outcome here? And I think for sure with the noise, with the traffic, I don't see this business maybe once to twice a year having, you know, maybe a backup from time to time. And, you know, I think it's an amenity that, you know, folks needed of this amenity helps keep, you know, us, makes it more convenient. So we go to the car wash versus washing in our driveway. I don't think that's a bad thing, but those are just kind of my kickoff thoughts right now, but I'm eager to hear what my colleagues have to think.
All right, thank you. The other commissioners have some thoughts. I'll, I'll throw some thoughts out there if I might here. I am concerned about the noise. I'm glad to hear the mayor saying that violations will be addressed. I I would think there would be some manufacturers or other professionals in the business that might address this if you have these sorts of facilities near residential. I looked up the map on the Lake Orion Tommy's, really not near any residential, it's more in a business industrial area. I don't know what the other Tommy's, how they're located. In fact, I guess I should ask the petitioner if when they studied this franchise, did they look at, did they go to other Tommy's? Did they look at other facilities and were they in neighborhood areas or were they in more industrial commercial areas? So I'll have to, I guess I would want to comment on that when I'm done with my yapping here. But I am concerned about the noise a little bit. I'm also concerned about the lighting. I noticed the staff report mentions that some of the areas, the way the the lighting plan is configured, that they would exceed the the ten-foot candles. And I just want to say, it's a big issue with me, you guys hear me? I know you're probably sick of me talking about lighting. But just because you can, doesn't mean you should. You've got LED lights that are very bright. They need to be controlled, they need to be studied. It's part of the requirement. We don't want bright lights shining in neighborhoods and in traffic. It's, it's not good and and so I'm concerned about that. I want to make sure all the lighting conforms with our ordinances. The traffic, I'm not that concerned about. I do think it's apples and oranges, maybe for another reason here. As I looked at that Starbucks, I am always amazed that people line up like they do. But I think there's only ten or twelve spaces that you can possibly line up there. The way this project is configured, it's twenty-six. You know, if if we if we approve the configuration they have, I don't, I think that's a considerable difference. And I don't think we're gonna have a problem with traffic backup. We may have a problem, you know, with people cutting through to get there, but any business that you put there, people will cut through to get there. And that's, that's, I'm afraid that's part of the, part of the life living next to Woodward. I am also concerned about the screening. I think we should seriously consider, I guess, with the site plan, requiring the fencing. Because if you're get this little one-foot strip along Woodward and people are likely to do the easiest, lowest maintenance thing, would you just put some rocks there? Not gonna be very attractive. You're gonna have the cars there right next to the sidewalk. I think we should consider requiring that fencing. I like Commissioner Douglas's idea about the horizontal fencing and to make sure we are properly screened, both for the nuisance of lights and for aesthetics. So those are my thoughts. I know it's a probably a little bit of a difficult site, it's a, it's a odd configuration. And I think the petitioner is doing the best they can to to fit it on this site. Oh, one last thing, parking along the alleyway, parking along the alleyway up and down Woodward, that's exactly what happens. That's, that's the standard in the alley. So I don't have a problem. I know it's technically a violation. We'd have to, I don't know if that has to go to the zoning board or we can grant it. But the way they've got the parking configured on the alleyway does not bother me. I think that, that seems like it's, there isn't much other options for for this petitioner on this site or anybody. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Chair. It's Woodward Avenue is zone general business. And that means that pretty much anything other than industrial developments is allowed there. This site could be a fast food restaurant. And it would, as the the chair correctly pointed out, generate cut-through traffic on Hunter as much as a car wash would. And yet you would have the the further disadvantages of the potential odors, the potential litter from a fast food restaurant. And you'd still have the the drive-through issues that this establishment has. So we, as a planning commission, can't say, no, 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 we don't want a car wash here. Car washes are allowed on Woodward with the appropriate level of approval. Woodward, the business strip on Woodward is so constrained that anybody doing pretty much anything is going to wind up in front of us needing some sort of concession, some, you know, weird thing or or changes in or, you know, zoning changes just to make things fit. It's just the the nature of a strip that is, you know, that was built up a hundred years ago. So we inevitably are going to have to, you know, help businesses configure their property in a way that you don't have to worry about when you're building it in a green field. That said, I think they have, I I think they've done a good job in configuring this site, minimizing the the risks, anticipating the noise level by putting the the vacuums along that commercial wall. And I'm not concerned really about traffic backing up. A, because nobody's gonna be, I mean, everybody is spending sixty seconds consuming the product. Nobody's waiting for their venti whole milk, no foam latte with whip. And furthermore, if someone, as has pointed out here, pulls up and sees that there's, you know, twenty-six cars queued up there, they can drive along the right-of-way parallel to Woodward and get down to Normandy or escape onto Woodward through that right-of-way. So I think we'll, there are some details that I think maybe we've talked about here, but in general, I'm inclined to support this concept.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure before I I seek other comments from Mr. Twink. So the first step is a vote on the special land use. Items such as potential fencing or something like that, that that should be connected with our vote on the site plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the first vote that we'll be facing is whether or not we're going to approve a special land use for this project. So any other comments from our commissioners? Mr. Curtis?
Well, I would make the motion to approve the request for special permit for special land use here.
Is there a second? There's a second by Commissioner Douglas. It was quick. You were combing your hair. I was gonna say that that was a second, but it wasn't. Okay. So we have a second. Just a clarification on the motion. There is one item that we last, we referenced in terms of permission to seek the variance from the zoning board for the driveway width of seventy-five feet.
Yeah, I didn't realize that was necessary to be in the the motion. Thank you, Mr. Twink. So I would add that permission to seek the variance.
The second one, I guess, depends on where the planning commission is going in regards to the required bypass lane. If you're going to accept that to be an additional stacking lane, that's a variance the ZBA would also have to grant to see it can. The ordinance does require a bypass lane and there's no discretion there for the planning commission to grant that waiver. Okay, so I think, I think the motion was to approve and and just correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Curtis, approve and and give permission for the petitioner to seek any required variances from the zoning board, yes?
That'll do. Thank you.
It would include the bypass lane.
And that's what I heard.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion on this motion from the commissioners? All right, seeing none, there is a motion and a second, so I'm gonna call for the vote. And we'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Now, Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
I'm a no.
And I am a yes. So the motion carries, the special land use is approved with the permission to go to the zoning board to seek all required variances. So now we would move on to the site plan and we have maybe a couple more comments from Mr. Twink or not? Well, very briefly, based on the discussion I've heard, item one obviously is in regards to the zoning board actually granting those variances for the maximum driveway and elimination of a bypass lane. The second one is simply in regards to the encroachments into a required setback based on the plan. So you'd allow all of the encroachments that are depicted for parking and for the driveline to occur as shown as well as the driveway spacing along the alley. And that's again referencing back to the parking as well as the two drivelines. The one change that I would point out is item four. What I've heard is rather than a thirty-inch masonry wall, the planning commission is discussing horizontal slat fencing in between Woodward and the property along Woodward Avenue. Other than that, they're all the standard contingencies that we normally apply to site plans. I guess I would ask, I am a, I would, I would like a little explanation here specifically about number five. Installation of a curb landscaping island you're talking about. Those, all of those are addressed on the submitted site plan. It's basically the landscape island that's at the northeast corner of Woodward and Hunter. It's resurfacing the Woodward right-of-way. It is in regards to closing the current.
current drive entrance across the right of way so that cars don't pull straight in. All of those items they've identified on their plan, staff simply left them in to make it clear those had to occur.
All right. All right, thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
So if the zoning board didn't, requires them to have the escape lane, then I would like to require the masonry wall. But if the zoning board allows them to use that third lane for stacking, then I would allow them to install a fence. Can we, is that, can we articulate that, Mr. Twink?
Tim, you're on mute there if you're speaking.
Yeah, I I was just trying to think how that would occur.
Could I ask a question about what you're talking about there, Commissioner Douglas? Either way, there's a third lane there, right? It's either a bypass or a stacking third lane. So masonry wall means maybe just a curb and a wall. Fence means probably a fence and a little bit of landscaping inside presumably, or I guess whatever side of that fence. But either way, that lane exists. So the amount of space available is the amount of space available, right? So that's what we're talking about.
Yes, Mr. Curtis, your point is well made. I I withdraw my suggestion.
All right. All right, I would seek further comment discussion from the planning commissioners regarding the site plan. Questions for the petitioner, questions for the questioner's twang. Mr. Curtis?
I I was really interested in what you had to say, Mr. Chairman, about screening as they turn into, you know, lights shining into the apartments and some change of configuration there that would, you know, give some relief to the apartments. And I thought I heard the petitioner say there's probably a way to do that and have, was your suggestion, Mr. Chairman, to maybe have an exit towards Hunter rather than the alley?
Well, it wouldn't be in Hunter, it would be the south part of the alley closer to Hunter. So instead of taking a curve there towards the apartment building, the bypass lane would go straight or not, yes, the but the outlet would go great on a diagonal parallel to Hunter and out the alleyway there. That way you could put, you would move the parking, the two parking spaces to the north. You could put a matching fence to screen that from the apartments. And then that seemed to me to be, would be a possible solution. Because right now you don't have screening.
Right.
But the headlights pointed right at the apartment building.
As you're working that out in your head, I'll trust your thoughts on it, but that sounds important to me. I just wanted to say.
I'm not sure if I'm supposed to talk, so I apologize.
Right ahead. I saw your mute go off, so please.
So we have no problem with that and would work at with the planning commission or whoever to satisfy that need. We could flip flop those two parking spaces and then have that exit kind of go more on an angle like you're talking with with the alley and exiting that way. That would allow us not only the fence but additional landscape too on that side. So we have zero problem with that. And again, we'll work with you to make sure that that's satisfactory.
Okay, well, then item could be added to number four. So we could do that, but when a motion is made. And let me ask the question, is there a motion or further discussion? And it would point out the contingencies do include number six, that the exterior lanes comply with the 10 foot candles. So that addresses my issue there. My other issue. Is there a motion formulated in someone's mind out there? Commissioner Douglas?
All right, I'm going to try this. So I would move approval of the site plan with item four specifying a 30 inch horizontal slat fence along the southwest front lot line and the Hunter Street side that the southeast exit be moved to the right and the two parking spaces swap with it. Anything else? Anybody?
30 foot or 30 foot, a 30 inch matching fence be provided for screening at that point.
Yes. So along that southeast portion.
Parallel to the to the alley.
Parallel to the alley, yes.
Should that be bigger than 30 inches, I would think, to provide screening?
That's, that's a kind of a standard for the height of carp headlights.
Okay.
That's, we've used that for a long time.
All right. And you would include the other contingencies as stated by?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Mayor? Seconds, okay. Discussion on the motion to approve the site plan with the amendments to number four and the rest of the contingencies. All right, seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. I will start with Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
No.
And I am a yes. Motion carries five to one. Congratulations. You're off to somewhat to the drawing board and then off to the zoning board. Good luck to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for everyone's help. Appreciate it.
Did your hand up?
I was just saying bye, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. What we did, we decided to do is to move up on the agenda. Because I should have mentioned that at the beginning, I guess we we sort of alluded to it, that we have a sign variance for the new Chipotle's drive through there at 305 West 11 Mile. And we would like to move that up because this is the last item in which there are petitioners who don't want to make them wait. Is is the petitioner for the signed variance present?
Yes, I'm here. I'm Kevin from Metro Detroit Signs.
All right, so let's go ahead and proceed with that. Mr. Twink, can you give us an update here?
Well, very, very simply, it's, they did submit a request to the building department to get a sign permit for a circular sign to go over the drive through window. If you look at the plans that are in front of you in the south elevation, you will see that circular sign above the drive through. It technically is above the roof line of the building. And roof signs are not permitted under the sign ordinance. So their request for that sign labeled as sign number B, I believe it's labeled as was denied and they have applied for a variance to allow that proposed sign to be located above the roof line.
Is that the only aspect of this variance?
That's the only aspect.
Okay. As the petitioner here, are you ready to?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you would please present your, present your request for relief.
Okay, I'm Kevin from Metro Detroit Signs. And basically what they're asking for, Chipotle was a bit surprised. They're asking for basically the same thing that Sonic had. On this is basically a like for like sign changeover from what Sonic had. And one of those is a sign above the above the drive through pickup window on that tower on the south elevation. It is above the roof line. So was the sign that Sonic had, and that was granted because back when Sonic got those signs approved, I don't know if it was about 15 years ago or so. They had the signs approved as part of their site plan approval. So therefore, it was sort of approved separate from the sign ordinance. Now, now Chipotle is going to change their signs. They'd like something similar. And we ran into this snag in that it's above the roof line. This site is unique in that there's going to be a canopy above the drive through pickup window, which means we can't really lower a sign to go below the roof line because that canopy would be in the way. We already, I should say Chipotle initially proposed a six foot circle wall sign on that elevation. They they moved it down to five feet so that they could lower the sign a bit more, but it's still slightly above the roof line. It wouldn't really alter the characteristics of the building at all because that's what Sonic had and and it's, I don't want to say that it's essential for visibility on on northbound traffic. That might be a bit of a stretch. But they would like to have some, some visibility for northbound traffic on Washington Boulevard because the the monument sign that they corner, that's right at the corner of 11 and Washington. Really see that until you're, well, you can't see that at all until you're past prints along Washington because that monument sign isn't perpendicular to the road. It's sort of at an angle facing the corner of 11 and South Washington. So that's another reason they'd like to have a sign on the south elevation. And yeah, it's pretty, pretty cut and dry. That that's what we're asking for. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from the commissioners? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to make a comment. I want to commend the department for being extremely consistent. They have always interpreted the sign statute in this manner, that this type of sign is a roof sign. I myself have done a legal analysis of this using the rules of statutory construction and looking at the ordinance language. And it's my opinion as a lawyer, that this is not a roof sign under the statute. This is a wall sign that happens to be on a parapet. And I have done a write up on this. I've done a legal analysis in a written form if anybody wants it. I'm happy to send it to you. But I don't think you need a variance. So I'm going to certainly be supporting the variance. And when I get a chance to make a text amendment proposal, I will. Mr. Curtis?
I'd like to move to grant the request for the variance.
Is there a second? Second from Mr. Gantina.
And I want to thank Mr. Casada for your lovely pictorial tour. My first meeting, we had this discussion about the nature of parapet walls and roof signs. And you had, I would guess, a half a dozen photographs around town to make your point.
I like to take photographs. All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. I'll start with Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Gantina?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the motion passes, the variance is granted. Congratulations. Good luck to you. I'm looking forward to eating.
All right. Thank you guys very much. Thanks for your time. Have a good night.
You.
Who supported that?
The support came from Mr. Gantina.
That's what I thought, but thanks.
Okay, now we're going to go backwards on the agenda and we're going to go to E2, which is the text amendment on the oh, is that the off street parking? I think so.
Correct. Do you, do you want to hear all the public comment on all the text amendments first?
Well, I I think that
Or how do you want to go through these?
Normally, normally you would make your comments first, Mr. Twink. And I think that maybe you can, you want to do them just run through the three of them real quick and then we'll hear the public comments.
Run through all, all the text amendments and then?
Yeah, I think just for the, for the benefit of the rest of the commissioners who weren't in on the conversation between staff and myself is that there is a number of public comments. In fact, there's a lot of public comments and many of them combine comments for E2, E3, E4, and even the master plan. So if in a perfect world, we would take these one at a time. But because people have left the messages on electronically on the phone, they've combined their comments. So when we hear the public comments, you're going to hear public comment on all, on all three of them at the same time on these callers. So that was my suggestion that Mr. Twink give us a brief overview. And then we go through the many recorded public comments.
Okay, very briefly on the first one, the minimum required off street parking requirements for multifamily dwellings. Again, this is, this is generated from discussions that the planning commission has had as well as some of the joint meetings with the zoning board of appeals. What's being proposed in the amendments are to change the parking requirement for multifamily dwellings from two parking spaces per unit or per dwelling to 1.3 spaces per dwelling in all zoning districts except where the, except the central district.
Somebody froze up. I hope, I hope it's not me. If I froze up.
Yeah, you look like the world's most amazing ventriloquist right now.
You're back. I can hear you, but I can't, yeah, you stopped for a minute. Okay.
Anyways, except for the central business district, multifamily would require under the proposed amendment, 1.3 spaces per dwelling. Off street parking for all residential in the central business district would be reduced from the one and a half spaces per dwelling to one space per dwelling. Minimum standard for, for two off street per dwelling for all other residential uses, single family and two family would remain. But the term one family would be modified to reference a single family detached and single family attached. So it's covering consistency in the wording. And then the last part of this particular one would change the term dwelling unit to dwelling to stay consistent with other sections in the ordinance as well as the definition section. Those are the items that are addressed in this amendment. Again, the staff report references you back to the discussion that the planning commission had back in August of 2019 and January of 2020. And then there's some other meeting. So this was generated out of those, those discussions. Do you want me to go into the next one? The building?
Yes.
The building height, maximum building height again, came out of some of those prior reports and discussions with the planning commission and the zoning board. Basically, multifamily buildings in multifamily residential zoning districts under their proposed wording would raise the minimum or the maximum height from 30 feet to 36 feet. Again, a lot of the reasoning for that was spelled out prior reports, which had to do with prior development proposals and a lot of the trends where the ground floors are much higher. A lot of the planning commission zoning board actions have allowed buildings somewhere in that 36 foot height range in order to meet construction codes and other reasons. The maximum permitted height in all buildings and office service, neighborhood business and neighborhood business too would also be raised from 30 feet to 36 feet. Again, for some of the same reasons and design issues. Maximum heights building for general business and regional business, which regional business is only the south end of town where the same development and some of the other the Griffin are constructed would raise the minimum or the maximum height from 30 feet to 56 feet. As again, that was some of the discussion at prior meetings. One of the things that we did point out in other reports is that that's been very consistent. with some of the, uh, developments that the, uh, planning commissioner zoning board has considered. Uh, and we did point out in a prior report that prior to the changes that occurred in two thousand one, general business actually allowed six stories for sixty-five feet. And those were all lowered to thirty feet back, uh, in two thousand one. There were some other standards for maximum heights from administrative and professional that actually were in the forty-five foot range. So, the maximum height to thirty-six feet is, uh, pretty consistent with what's needed in order for developments to occur of three stories. Uh, the, the story, maximum story provision is kind of left, uh, because the, number of feet in the stories always didn't line up depending on what the development wanted to have happen. Uh, again, so those were all based on, uh, prior reports and discussions of what has occurred and what hasn't occurred in the, in the past. I won't spend a lot of time on that unless we've got questions. The last one, um, planning commission has not really spent any time on, um, we just scheduled it for a public hearing this evening for your discussion. Uh, if you need more time on going through it, um, that's fine. What this one is in regards to is the sale of alcoholic beverages. What the ordinance says right now is it treats restaurants and bars that obviously have a li- a license or attempting to get a license, uh, to have, um, alcohol sales and consumption on site. Uh, the planning commission, uh, role has generally been in reviewing and approving the special land use and site plan. The way the zoning ordinance wording is right now, you can't take any action until after the city commission has approved a plan of operation for that license. Meaning the city commission has already said it's okay to have a liquor license there. From a staff standpoint, that's cute, uh, and, and developers, business owners standpoint, it creates a lot of confusion. And their argument is, well, I already have a license. Why do I need to do this to? And, so what we're somewhat suggesting is that the final approval of the special land use and site plan on, on a new or a transferred liquor license end at the city commission. And the city commission just considers it, approves it, or rejects it after the planning commission has, uh, held a public hearing, uh, and, and given a recommendation. So both final decision on the special land use site plan and plan of operation would all occur at the city commission. Hopefully concurrently, um, but it'd have one body acting upon the, uh, discussion there. It goes into a lot more detail and some of the nuances of how that occurs in the report. But the gist of it was, uh, right now, someone could go through the police department, go to the city commission, get their plan of operation and liquor license approved. And we experience and then going, putting construction documents together and actually submit for building permits and have to stop them and tell them, no, you can't do that. You still got to get the site plan and special land use approval. So there is some delay and inconsistencies there and confusion. So what we would like to do, as I said, would just have the special land use approval occur at the city commission. Two other ways that occurs right now is the residential restricted accessory parking lots. The planning commission reviews those and provides a recommendation to the city commission, which has final say. The other one will be the marijuana establishments. Uh, those will come through the planning commission. But final approval would occur at the city commission. So it's not something that hasn't occurred previously. We're just trying to, I guess, smooth the process here. Those are the three amendments. So I'll stop there.
All right. Thank you. Um, Mr. Curtis.
Uh, uh, Mr. Thing, could I just, the last one about the sale of alcohol, that, that's new to me. You mentioned it hasn't been kicked around too much. But I understand it's basically trying to make somewhat of a clumsy process a little cleaner, right? So could you just in like one sentence, help me understand how that would make, what, how does this get cleaned up?
Um, in one sentence.
Or two.
The, uh, rather than having two or three bodies act upon one facility business, because they sell liquor, right now we potentially have three. And, and what we would like to clean it up with is leaving that all with the city commission. So it would go from the planning commission having final say on a, on a special land use. Right now, the city commission can issue, can say they got a liquor license. And the planning commission can say, no, we disagree and we're going to deny your special land use permit. We have separate, separate actions. So we're, we're, rather than that potential occurring, um, we want to clean that up. Then secondly, right now, once one body acts, the petitioner feels like they have an approval, which they don't. So it creates confusion and other things, so.
All right. So, uh, does anybody have any other question from Mr. Twing before we move to the public, uh, comments? All right, Ms. Schwanger. You may, uh, start the cavalcade of comments.
All right, I will do so.
Thank you for this opportunity to comment on items E two and E three of the August ten, twenty twenty-one planning commission agenda. My name is Carlton Brown and I've been a Royal Oak resident for twenty-three years. First of all, regarding items E two and E three, I want to ask the city to make sure the notification requirements for zoning ordinance amendments are applied as specified in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, section one twenty-five, thirty-two oh two, three. This section refers to section one twenty-five, thirty-one oh three that states the occupants of all structures within three hundred feet of the subject property should be notified. This notification may be delivered by the United States Postal Service not less than fifteen days before the date their request will be considered. I surveyed the neighbors in my subdivision, which is adjacent to Woodward and Thirteen Mile. Six residents replied that they have not received a notice. Zero residents indicated receipt of a notice. Regarding item E two, there is currently a parking overflow situation amongst the multiple family dwellings along Thirteen Mile east of Woodward. Please study the nighttime parking situation in this area before concluding that even the existing number of parking spaces is adequate. The reference reports from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty focus on reducing the number of non-conforming lot sizes of existing multifamily dwellings. But they do not mention studying the actual number of cars parked at or around these multiple family dwellings at night. It seems contradictory that the existing parking overflow issue can be solved by reducing the required number of parking spots. Please reject this proposal. Regarding items E three, general business properties are predominantly along Woodward next to one family dwellings. Reviewing the zoning map, I counted one hundred and seventy-five one-family addresses adjacent to a general business property on Woodward. Just imagine you are living in one of these one hundred and seventy-five houses when a fifty-six foot wall is unexpectedly built and now shades your house. This will not enhance the quality of life and is not compatible with the surrounding land use. And has a potentially negative influence on property values, which goes against section seven seventy, one twenty-nine D in the criteria for this amendment. My suggestion is to address this by including a language consistent with the central business district zoning language, specifically section seven hundred forty-two, D, one A. All buildings or portions of buildings on lots immediately adjacent to a residentially zoned parcel and not separated by any street, alley, or other right-of-way, or separated by only an alley shall be maintained at no greater than thirty feet in height. Since no changes are proposed to this central business district building height formula, I conclude that this is a reasonable approach that has been tested and accepted downtown. Thank you for considering my comments.
Janice Wagner, I'm calling to address two issues on tonight's agenda. First, the zoning ordinance text amendments to decrease minimum parking requirements and increase the height of buildings. As stated by Commissioner Douglas, August thirteenth, twenty nineteen, the purpose for bringing items forward before rewriting the master plan is to have fewer items on your agenda and allow the administration to approve them. I'm sorry, but that also means the residents, especially those that surround those new developments, would not be able to participate in the normal public hearing process. Both of these changes should be part of the master plan process, which includes town hall, surveys, and most importantly, public input. Secondly, if ever there was a time to not expedite a new master plan, the review, uh, review period, it is now. One question from the proposed resolution is, have conditions in the city of Royal Oak changed to warrant an entirely new master plan? Prior to COVID, you might have said yes, but now the real answer is, we don't know. We can all agree COVID has had a wide-ranging impact on our economy and real estate. We don't know what impact the eventual lifting of the rental eviction moratorium will have on housing demands and vacancies. We don't know what impact the headly allowed inflationary increases on our property taxes will have on demand. And we don't know the eventual effects of inflation on the demand for all real estate. We don't know if Royal Oak will need to follow in the footsteps of other cities like Lansing and look for ways to reconfigure offices to apartments due to lease cancellations. Further, according to surveys, at least half of all employees are willing to take a pay cut in order to continue to work from home. If they are given the opportunity, how many of those people who chose to live in Royal Oak because of its location and ability to commute using I seventy-five and I six ninety-six will no longer choose to live here? We don't know. Bottom line, until the full impact of COVID has been realized, we can't answer what the direction of zoning should be and what should be considered for changes in the master plan. Given all the things we don't know and won't know until then, COVID, uh, and most importantly, the rights of residents to speak for or against change, I ur- urge you to vote no tonight on these agenda items.
Hi, my name is Jason Mill. I recently moved to eleven twenty-nine North Wilson Avenue. And I had a general comment about the city planning commission. I understand that there's some changes that are being discussed at a high level. And, uh, I'm generally speaking against those. I, I don't want to reduce the parking requirements and increase the skyline and make everything taller. I, I don't want that. That's not why I chose to move to Royal Oak. I just paid a considerable amount of money to finally get to a city like this that's full of single-family homes and parks and all kinds of natural beauty. That's what I want more of. I, I don't want high-rise apartments in dense urban congestion and congested downtown traffic. I understand that those are important businesses and they bring money to the city and they bring money to the city council. But I think that ultimately it's the residents that the city should be beholden to because we're the ones that have to live here. It should be residents and not real estate developers that are making the decisions and driving the decision. I don't think that real estate developers should be driving changes to the city master plan. It just doesn't seem like a judicious use of city resources or of the faith that the public has put in these organizations. So I would like to comment again, but amending the master plan is not something that we should be doing on a regular basis. I think that starting over for something as momentous as a master plan is something that we should never do. Um, I think that the master plan has produced a successful, good city that was desirable enough for people to continuously move in and pay a premium to live there. So please do not amend the master plan. Please, if that ever is amended, it must be amended, do it as infrequently as possible. Don't think that we should be starting over very often. We want a balanced residential environment with natural beauty. That's what we all know and love. That's what we wanted. That's what everybody who comes here wants. They want to live in peace and they want to be surrounded by other people who also want to live in peace. It's about the people who live here, not just the people who shop here. So thank you for taking into account what I have to say and what I think. I hope that others feel the same way and that we can convince you to not make drastic changes. Thank you.
Yes, this is Eileen Zeko Krupa. And, uh, I want, uh, the planning committee to vote no on agenda item E two, agenda E three, agenda item S two, because it is detrimental to the effect on the neighboring residential sections. And no, uh, impact studies have been done to really ensure the changes won't be detrimental. So I think, um, as we have a master plan and we have goals one and four, this violates the master plan goals. Thank you.
This is Bill Harrison, uh, twenty-seven twenty-nine Trafford, Woodward Site subdivision. I want to comment on agenda item number three. Uh, raising the Woodward Avenue building heights from thirty to fifty-six feet is problematic. I live one block east of Woodward, uh, between Webster and Thirteen Mile. I'm concerned that there were no notices of this meeting sent to property owners within three hundred feet of a commercial property on Woodward. The existing low-rise buildings have insufficient parking. Parking for most of the existing buildings is limited to the county property in front of the buildings. When a new building is constructed, the county typically requires the county property to be converted to green space. Increasing the allowable building height from thirty to fifty-six feet is an eighty-seven percent increase in height. This will increase the rentable area, which will in turn increase the parking demand. The existing lots are adjacent to single-family homes. The commercial property depths are shallow. The lots are only a hundred and twenty-five feet deep, including the twenty-foot alley. This is, uh, the typical depth of a residential lot, to put it into perspective. How can adequate parking be provided for new buildings of an increased height on shallow lots when the existing parking area is replaced with green space? I am concerned that the new developments will be done under a P U D with the increased building height and reduced parking requirements, which will be further, uh, which will further increase the overflow into the neighborhood. Thank you.
Dr. Wallace Anderson, four zero four Mount Vernon Boulevard. I speak to oppose new business items E two, E three, and E four, and other business item F two. The zoning ordinance text amendments you propose for reducing required off-street parking for multifamily dwellings and raising permitted heights in multifamily, office, commercial, industrial, and mixed-use zone areas likely will have deleterious effects on single-family homes and neighborhoods. Your resolutions claim that, quote, "The planning commission has determined that the proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance are consistent with the goals and objectives of the city of Royal Oak master plan," end quote, leads me to question whether you've even read that plan. The master plan's number one goal is to recognize, preserve, and enhance existing neighborhoods as the foundation of a strong community and provide a balanced residential environment. Objective one under that is to preserve, maintain, and enhance the character of existing neighborhoods. Objective three is to ensure that multiple family development and redevelopment is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood characteristics. You are still operating under the master plan approved in two thousand twelve. You are looking to start developing an entirely new master plan. But until you have such a new plan, you must not alter provisions that are in place now, at least in these important areas. The current master plan's number one goal and objective, one point one, The current master plan's number-one goal and objective one point one specifies preserving, maintaining, and enhancing the character of existing neighborhoods. This principle begins the document. Its importance is clear from placement alone. Reducing off-street parking requirements for multifamily dwellings will drive residents with multiple cars and residence visitors into a budding neighborhood, many of which will be single-family zones. Raising the height standards also would negatively affect a budding neighborhood. Houses could be overshadowed by several stories, decreasing rather than enhancing the neighborhood's character. Exceptions should continue to be reviewed by the ZBA. A multifamily dwelling next to an industrial zone, for example, might require less off-street parking, but that should be decided case by case. As to Item F-four, I was appalled to read, and I quote, "The Royal Oak Planning Commission determines that the demographics, goals, objectives, future land use map, and recommended actions of the current City of Royal Oak master plan are no longer relevant and applicable to the physical development of the City of Royal Oak," end quote. A large majority of Royal Oak residents either grew up here and stayed or moved in because of its neighborhoods. To say that neighborhood protections are no longer relevant seems blasphemous. Do not accelerate the master plan review and go into it with a mindset to preserve most of its protections. Finally, I oppose changing the process for approval of sale of alcoholic beverages as proposed. It gives far too much authority to the City Commission and insufficient control from the police, planning commission, and ZBA.
Hello, my name is James Moran. I am a Royal Oak resident. I'm calling to urge the Planning Committee to vote no on several of the amendments, but I think I'm limited to just one comment. So I think just that the master plan zoning ordinances are fine the way they are. We don't need multifamily places going up near our homes. So I guess that is my main concern, is having renters, apartments, the like around my area. So, all right, thank you.
This message is for the zoning board ordinance where you want to change the elevation of buildings along Woodward corridor. I'm Larry Stafford. I live at four three two seven Robinwood. I live in the Woodward corridor. I do not want to look at a five-story building for my house. I am totally against this rezoning. You've passed the zoning so that you could get your pawn shop in and your marijuana shops in along Woodward. Enough is enough. Zoning Board, I hope you're there to represent the people of Royal Oak, not the mayor, what he wants. Please, this has got to stop. I am totally against it. Don't forget, Mr. Mayor, it's election coming up. And Commissioner Douglas, same thing with you when you came to my door, knocked on my door. We are totally against this stuff. Evidently, you didn't hear me. Elections is coming up for you also. Have a good day. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robin DeSico. This is a general comment for the commission. I've been a resident for twenty-five years, and I am asking that you vote no for increased building heights, especially for those being erected next to existing residential homes. I want you to vote no with regard to decreasing parking spots, especially those where there's going to be no guest or insufficient guest parking for either residential and/or commercial areas. I think that that would cause a huge increase in density, congestion in the residential areas. Also, please vote no on redoing the master plan. It is really, I think, way ahead of its time. No studies have been done, and it's going to do away with so many things that have built up and benefited the community for so many years, and especially because it's going to do away with the current Goal One and Goal Four of the current master plan, which is to recognize, preserve, and enhance existing neighborhoods as the foundation of a strong community, and to improve both the function and visual appearance of the major commercial corridors within Royal Oak. The commission wants to, what the commission wants to do by passing its current agenda is illogical and harmful to current residents. To decrease parking erect apartments or potentially with potentially hundreds of tenants and potentially no height requirements under the PUD, the Planned Unit Development, which substitutes subjective criteria for objective criteria, and allow commercial buildings or apartment buildings to be erected with insufficient parking spaces is illogical. It means customers of businesses are going to be driving around and parking on the residential streets and congesting those areas. It's counterintuitive to have huge buildings erected in apartment complexes in residential areas. You're going to decrease green spaces, which is environmentally unfriendly. You're going to have a lot more water runoff, which has been a big issue in Royal Oak for many, many years. To permit apartments or duplexes to be built right up to the property line because you're going to do away with variances is unfair, unjust, because residents do not have that same benefit. They have to get a variance from the city. You're going to disturb quiet enjoyment of the adjacent residents and homeowners in that area. Commercial construction in that area is also unfair to allow the benefits, give them the benefits when you're not giving residents benefits. But more so, I would like to appeal to your common sense, your sense of fairness, what's just and what's righteous, to rewrite this master plan and increase, which Royal Oak has had for decades, and increase. Hi, my name is Robin DeSico. This is a general comment.
Yeah, Charles Simcina. I'm calling in for the public comment on non-agenda items. I'd like to comment about the lack of public engagement that seems to be chronic, lack of sufficient notice, and presentation of agenda items on the printed agenda that commonly happens. I would call the methodology that's constantly being used for public engagement as public non-engagement. Significant items appear on the agenda without any written notice to anyone on a common basis, while other items, simple site plan approvals, get mailings to neighborhood people within three hundred feet. One example is today, where the entire Woodward corridor is being proposed to be, have amendments to the zoning ordinance to allow very tall buildings very close to single-family residents and reducing parking requirements. I spoke before sixty people Saturday morning about the lack of proper notice. Sixty people in the audience, a hundred percent of them, never received any mailing, email, anything on the city website, no notice at all from the city. Only four of those sixty people subscribed to the Daily Tribune. None of them noticed any type of printed alert. The changes you have proposed coming up affect thousands of homeowners and property owners, and no one knows about it except for probably some people on social media and who came to a meeting on Saturday. The public engagement that's been conducted in the past when there are significant changes would mimic the process from the zoning ordinance. First, there would be studies. Then there would be public engagement. Then there'd be drafting of an ordinance. Then there'd be other meetings and public engagement. Then redrafting the ordinance. The whole idea is to get the sentiment from the public and what they need and what they want before you even draft an ordinance. A year and a half ago, you drafted an ordinance. Public was not involved at all, and all you're doing is taking a piece of that ordinance, some significant pieces that affect thousands of people, and not providing notice that you're prepared to move forward on those tonight. The purpose of the public hearing is to let the public engage, but the public doesn't know. The process to develop the ordinance is flawed. The process to provide notice to residents is flawed, and the entire process needs to be rethought before the Planning Commission moves forward on anything at all. The agenda itself seems to hide and disguise the most significant thing today, which is the review of a five-year master plan. No one looking at that agenda would realize that the proposed resolution would have the impact of an entire rewrite of the master plan and major changes to the zoning ordinance. It's at the bottom.
Hi, this is William McGuire calling. General, this is for a general meeting. I'm opposed to raising the heights along, well, probably along Woodward or anywhere else from the thirty foot to almost sixty feet. That's going to cause a lot of problems for people to purchase those homes there and then anticipate what they saw, and now that you'll be changing that, black out the back of their houses half the time. So it's one I know that I'm opposed to, the large change on the raising of the buildings from, I think it was from thirty-some feet to almost sixty feet. Thank you.
Yes, hi, this is Gail McGuire, four four five six Arlington Drive, and I just want to say, if you are going to make changes to our master plan for our city, please ask for citizens' input on these changes. We are the ones who are going to have to live with these changes for years to come. These changes will also affect our decisions on whether or not to continue living in this city. We, as citizens, have a right to input on these zoning and master plan changes. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Hi, my name is Ed Calil. I live on Burnham Street, and I object to the fifty-six-foot towers that they want to put on Woodward, because there's a variety of reasons. One, it's going to block the sun. Another one, we're going to have a parking problem. In other words, our streets will probably flood because the water has to go someplace. I don't see the point of it, you know? I just, I'm totally against that kind of stuff. I don't know what the purpose is, and I don't know where they're going to put the cars or where these people are going to wind up. Now, in that, you have extra garbage. Right now, off of Thirteen and Guilford, I just went by there, and the guy's already put the four garbage cans, and this is only Tuesday. So they're going to have to put garbage someplace. And, you know, we're just going to have a colossal mess. We have a nice neighborhood. To put the buildings someplace else, I don't know what else to say. My number's two four eight, two two seven, seven nine six four. Thank you.
My name is Roald Anderson, and I reside at four oh four Mount Vernon Boulevard. I am concerned about the public safety implications of the proposed changes in minimum required off-street parking for multifamily dwellings. Assuming that the proposed changes, if implemented, would result in more on-street parking in adjacent residential streets, such added on-street parking could impair the ability to clear the streets of vehicles when a snow emergency is declared. That impairment would either result in more vehicles being towed to accommodate snow removal during the snow emergency or incomplete and ineffective snow removal. Additionally, in on-street parking increases, there arises the potential of such parking congestion slowing emergency responses by the city's police department and the city's fire department. At the very least, before such zoning changes are implemented, the management of the city's Department of Public Services, the city's police department, and the city's fire department should be consulted.
Hello, my name's Richard Quishen. I live on River, I'm sorry, I live on Glenwood Street in Royal Oak. As a matter of fact, I'm calling regarding the multifamily proposal in the city. I want Royal Oak to stay a single-family neighborhood. We have a nice neighborhood. And also, concerning the Woodward corridor, because I live one house off of Woodward, I did live two houses off of Woodward, and the city managed to allow them to tear a house down and add, give more space for this AT&amp;T store next to my house. Fortunately, back then, they wanted to make, there was proposal for that to be like three stories high, which would have been a complete blanket over my backyard with no sunlight. So I want to ex-nay your increasing the, stop your proposed plans for increasing the height of buildings being built on Woodward Avenue, and I want you to keep Royal Oak a single-family neighborhood. We have a beautiful city here, and that's why people moved to this city and this neighborhood, because they liked what it had to offer. So keep it the way it is. Bye.
Yes, Robert Myers, nineteen fifteen Rowland Avenue. I wanted to call in to vote no on Item Agenda E-two, E-three, and F-two. I don't think it's healthy for the neighborhoods or Royal Oak in general. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Denise Perezky, and I would like to make a comment to the Planning Commission, which is meeting today, Tuesday, August tenth. I would encourage the Planning Commission to vote no to the following amendments on the agenda, Item Number E-two, which concerns reducing parking, minimum parking spaces, Agenda Item E-three, which considers the height of buildings that could be possibly built, Agenda Item F-two, which is actually moving up the master plan revision by a full year. I believe that residents and not special interest groups should drive the changes to the master plan. The above-mentioned agenda items would negatively impact our neighborhoods, and changing our master plan, we don't need to do that yet for another year. The master plan should reflect what the residents want and not what special interest groups want. I'm also concerned that the zoning amendments up for discussion do not meet the master plan goals. Our current zoning ordinances for businesses and multifamily zoning districts protect our adjacent neighborhoods and the quality of life and property values in Royal Oak. People love living in Royal Oak. They love having their yards. They love being able to go to the parks. And with the requirements for, you know, high-density dwellings and multiple-family dwellings and not having enough parking is definitely going to impact our neighborhoods. I really would appreciate it if you would vote no on the agenda items that I listed, and let's not redo the master plan until it's time. I really think that the residents should drive that and not special interest groups. Thanks for your time. Please make the right decision.
Hi, this is Amy, last name Udit, U-T-Y-C-H, three six two four Duxshire. I'm calling about the planning meeting. I strongly recommend no to increasing the height of buildings from thirty to thirty-six inches. I'm sorry that apartment owners and developers want bigger ceilings. The best way to wealth in the city and prosperity is for actual homeownership. We have plenty of apartments. Also, you would like to reduce the number of parking places from two to one point three. One- and two-bedroom apartments should always have a minimum of two spaces plus a half for guests. You are asking people to wind up parking in neighborhood streets, which the taxpayers pay, the homeowners pay for the upkeep of those roads. I can attest, our road is being patched. Thirdly, I live in a corridor of Woodward. Absolutely no five-story buildings from thirty-six, from the, to the fifty-six five-story buildings. That is always a no. Every business on Woodward is abutted by a neighborhood, a school, a park. We do not have the room. We do not have the infrastructure. You cannot ask people to park on the neighborhood streets. Anything is better than a five-story apartment building due to developers' demand. Why don't you look at the City of Troy with their Fifteen Mile Initiative, where they do businesses on the bottom, loft on the top, owned by the business owner- where they do, uh, businesses on the bottom, loft on the top, owned by the business owner so they can retain their home and employment in the city of Royal Oak? Why not make Woodward Main Street? Hi, this is-
Hi, I would like to, uh, for the Commission to vote no to agenda items E-two, E-three, and F-two, to amending zoning that would negatively impact our neighborhoods and changing our master plan. Thanks for listening to us, thank you.
Hi, Terry Myers, Roland Avenue. I just wanted to voice my concerns about wanting to change the master plan a year early, and also some zoning ordinance that you wanna change and get buildings really high up on Woodward. I think your main concern should be the blight in the neighborhoods. I have called several times regarding certain homes, and things still are not taken care of. That, and also the infrastructure, streets, flooding problems that we have, instead of wanting to build, build, build. Thank you.
My name is Linda Tumala. I'm calling regarding to the agenda item E-two. Please vote no. Reducing parking in multi-family dwellings is short-sighted. Even one-bedroom apartments today, there will be two cars per apartment very often, due to having roommates, or sharing with the cost of the rent, or a couple who both have cars. Even with people working from home, they are not getting rid of their cars. In my small condo development, we had an issue with parking, as one household had four cars for two people. They were using our limited guest parking for long periods of time, which had to be addressed. Parking in the central business district restriction from one-point-five to one space, I see as a move to force citizens to use the overbuilt parking garages. Many are not able to walk distances from the garages to the restaurants and stores. Thus, they don't come to the CBD anymore. Women have commented that they will not come, they will not park in the garages. By cutting back the parking from one-point-five to one space, there will be a decrease in people interested in our businesses and the CBD. It's very short-sighted to do, uh, to change from one and a half to one space. Agenda item E-three, increasing the maximum height of buildings along the Woodward corridor. Please vote no. I see this as a push from the city to bring in more taxes and appease developers. Developers will always ask for more, more, and more. It brings their profits up. They build and leave, but the citizens of Royal Oak, living in the beautiful neighborhoods close to Woodward, have their neighborhoods changed forever. These are the people the Planning Commission should be thinking about. Neighborhoods and their citizens, these are what make Royal Oak a community, not developers who build, profit, and leave.
This is Adam Bernard at twenty-eight-fourteen Glenwood Road, calling about agenda items E-two and E-three and F-two. Uh, specifically, section one-twenty-five dot thirty-two-oh-two of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. We, one-ten requires that the Planning Commission notify, uh, residents for structures within three-hundred feet of our residences for any proposed zoning amendments. Nobody in our neighborhood received any notification, so the first thing I would propose is that these items both be tabled. If, in violation of the law, you choose to discuss them, I would ask that you vote no. Royal Oak is not an urban city. If you'd like to live in an urban city, then please move to one, but people have moved to Royal Oak for the purpose of enjoying, uh, suburban life in a nice, single-family dwelling. And the notion that we are gonna be abandoning that for multi-unit dwellings to turn this into a forest of apartment buildings is going to be frankly repulsive to a lot of folks. And it's certainly not gonna bring business or residents into the city unless it's to come here and live and then go spend their dollars elsewhere.
Hi, my name is Linda Nesbit. I live at thirty-six-sixteen Yarba Linda Boulevard, Royal Oak. My relate, my remarks are related to the Commission agenda items E-two, E-three, and F-two. This is not a good idea. Our master plan is just fine the way it is. It must be reviewed every five years. We don't need to start a review of the master plan early in the midst of this COVID-nineteen pandemic. Please do not rezone and save the single-family Royal Oak neighborhoods. Please vote no on all these proposals. Thank you for your attention.
Hi, this is Kevin Carr, twenty-seven-thirty-two Benbridge Avenue. I do not agree with your plan to add, there are takeaway spaces for multiple-family housing on, off of Thirteen Mile, and I do not agree with your plan to increase the height of buildings on Thirteen Mile. Thank you.
Hi, this is Amy Mauger, and I reside at two-six-one-five Aberdovee, four-eight-zero-seven-three. And my comments are in regards to, um, some of the parking and building height proposals being reviewed tonight. My first comment is that I have not received any sort of notification, um, that this was being reviewed and/or voted on tonight. Um, so I'm not even sure what's going on tonight, um, but I am very concerned. I'm hoping that some sort of information can be sent to us before any sort of final resolution is made, as it, this definitely affects the residents. Um, my first comment is regarding the parking of agenda items E-two and E-three. Um, I, right now on Shenandoah off of Thirteen Mile, there's already a severe parking problem that regularly almost causes accidents. Um, it's very hard to get out onto Thirteen Mile, and many times as you turn onto Thirteen Mile, there's not enough room to get onto Shenandoah, um, and it, your trishes hanging out basically into traffic, um, which is pretty dangerous, and I can see where it could cause a lot of accidents. So, bringing parking down from, um, two spots to one-point-three spots is really detrimental to the neighborhood and a danger, um, as well. Um, I'm also concerned about increasing some of those building heights along Woodward. I'm not necessarily opposed to increasing the building heights, but I really am, again, concerned about parking on the residential streets and what it's gonna do to those residential streets and what kind of backup it's gonna cause. Um, I can see the need to build our city, but at the same time, it can't be at the cost of the residents and the cost of the properties. Um, if you have any questions, um, I can be reached at two-four-eight, eight-five-four, five-four-five-eight. Thank you.
This is Marty Herman, and I was leaving a comment regarding the rezoning proposal to increase the building height and decrease parking, uh, requirements. And I wanted to state that our household is against this proposal. Uh, we don't think it would be a good fit for the neighborhood to have high-rises along Woodward. I don't think that's the direction the, the city should go in. Thank you.
And that concludes the public comment for this evening.
All right, thank you. All right, so as far as where we go from here, I think, uh, we probably wanna discuss what, given, given some of the comments there. Uh, we'd like to respond to those, a lot of, a lot of input from, uh, folks. Um, what is, Mr. Twing, what is the agenda for tonight in terms of, uh, these amendments? Are we, are we presented with the option of voting yes or no? Are we, uh, presented with, do we have other options such as having a discussion, inviting more input? What are, what are our, our options here, Mr. Twing?
Well, your options are, uh, are wide open. Um, it was simply scheduled for a public hearing based on, um, prior discussions with the Planning Commission. Uh, I believe some of the input from the zoning board at your joint meetings. Um, obviously, you can continue discussion at a future meeting. You can take an action to recommend approval of one or all of the proposed amendments to the City Commission. Um, or you can take an action that, based on the comments, that you don't feel the amendments are necessary and, uh, and reject them, and, uh, further review of those would come to an end.
That's a wide spectrum. Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, I think part of that calculus is to understand a little bit, um, you know, public engagement. We heard some comments tonight about notifications. Um, can you kind of explain? I know we've been talking about some of these for a couple of years now, we've had some reports come out, you know, all the agendas are public. But is there a misunderstanding about how the notice is publiced, or can you speak to that, Mr. Twing, based on some of the public comment?
Uh, well, there is no requirement on a tax amendment. This is not a rezoning in the sense of rezoning a piece of property to another district. This is not a particular development that occurs on a particular piece of property. This is, these are proposed tax amendments to existing zoning districts. And there is no requirement to give notice to anyone within three-hundred feet. It's simply a requirement to post those in the paper, identify what they are, and give a substantive, uh, description. So, that's all been done. Um, but there is no notice to people within three-hundred feet as you would do on a particular development. The, uh, car wash tonight, because it was a particular proposal on that site, got notice at three-hundred feet. If you had been rezoning that to a PUD or a conditional rezoning, that would've also given out notice, uh, as it impacted that particular site. Uh, but there is no requirement on a tax to give notice to everyone within three-hundred feet of all of Woodward Avenue.
Is that, is that typical, I mean, for most communities? When we look up and down Woodward, Birmingham, Berkeley, I mean, it's all pretty much a standard note. It may vary from two-hundred-fifty feet to three-hundred feet, but it's pretty much the same protocol when you talk about, you know, these type of things, as far as how cities, um, notice.
But the required notes are, are, are pretty much standard.
Then, the, the other question I have is, how long has this, these processes been in place? I mean, have they been around since, you know, the, I mean, twenty years, thirty years? I mean, have we changed anything recently?
Well, the Enabling Act, I believe, was, without looking it up, I wanna say it was two thousand and fourteen had its last amendment. But the, the Zoning Enabling Act, which grants the cities, uh, the authority to create zoning and create zoning districts, has been around a long time. Obviously, it's been amended over the years, um, uh, by the state legislature at various points in times. And that's, that's basically what you operate under, uh, in, in writing zoning ordinance, in writing provisions, uh, the State Enabling Act, Zoning Enabling Act. As I said, it gives the city the authority, uh, to even have a zoning ordinance, so.
But in terms of notice for things like this, or for any sort of buildings or whatever, I mean, that has been pretty much the same practice. You know, I know there's a zoning enabling act, but as far as how the, has noticed people, has been around for twenty years, I imagine.
Well, the, the city's zoning ordinance simply references the, the Enabling Act as how we're gonna give notice. Simply because of the state legislature changes how the cities have to give notice, uh, we don't have to go amend the zoning ordinance. So, we're simply referring to that statute as to how we give notice. So, if, uh, special land use requires notice to everyone within three-hundred feet, we give them that notice. If there is no requirement to give out mailed notices, we don't mail them out.
But I mean, those, those requirements on the notice in, in yours have been pretty, I mean, if anything, they've been increased as far as who we have to notice and when over the years.
Uh, I, in October, I've been here thirty years, and it hasn't changed in the time I've been here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just gonna comment here, I think, uh, the distinction here is that, uh, if you have a particular property that is proposing a, a change in zoning or other, uh, issue, then the neighbors are notified, and, and that's a requirement, and the department has done that, that's what I understand. Tax amendments are different, they don't require it. There was one caller who quoted a section of the Zoning Enabling Act, and I happened to look it up real quick, and indeed, it does not require notice along Woodward corridor. However, requirements and wisdom are two different things. I would point out for anybody listening that, of course, we did have Judy Davis, the Community Outreach Director, and we actually had a discussion about, four or five months ago, about how to reach out, how we might reach out and get public input for proposed tax amendments. So, we have, uh, studied that outside of the ordinance or statutory requirements. We, we looked at that out of, uh, we thought, maybe it's a good idea. And we had Judy come in and give us, give us a, a presentation, if you remember. And we might wanna consider that as we, we go forward with, with this. There's a difference between being required and, and, uh, finding a benefit in doing it. Um, I have a question for Mr. Twing, as long as that, oh, what do you, go ahead.
Well, I guess, I wanted to ask a question, uh, to also make sure we get something on the record, and this would be to, to Mr. Twing. Uh, short of the staff's work, uh, to compile the information that's being brought forward to us today, uh, the Planning Commission's desire to look into this and all the discussions around these, um, these tax amendments have all been discussed in a public forum, correct? There were no closed sessions or any, any other discussions around the, uh, the, the interest in looking at these in anything other than a public forum that has happened over the course of the past several years? Would you say it's a correct statement that no, no work, none of this discussion has happened, you know, outside of a public forum?
No, not as, not as far as it deals with the, uh, Planning Commission and, and joint zoning board work sessions, no. I mean, obviously, staff's work on it was a part of that, but this has all been generated by conversations at the Planning Commission level.
Okay, thank you.
The nail-call beverage one, where I, I said staff was simply trying to clean that up.
Sure. Uh, and that's sort of my point, I just wanted to emphasize the fact that all discussions around these have happened in this forum, um, in terms of the, the public's ability to access the information.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
And just on that point, you know, I was looking at my notes here, I heard, which surprised me, like, special interests in developers and builders. I mean, Mr. Twing, uh, uh, my recollection with all of this, this was all coming from staff originally to look at changes, to modernize some things, given, you know, all the things that have changed since twenty-five years ago, when some of these ordinances were last tweaked, maybe. And so, um, I mean, is this, is this something, we have developers coming to us telling us to do this? I just want you to confirm that this is something that is from our planning department with this Planning Commission that we've been discussing, and that it wasn't a number we are going for, it was the research we asked you to do in order to make a recommendation back to us.
That's totally correct. It's all come from, really from the Planning Commission's interest to address certain issues. And staff looked at, um, various elements of, and, and one of the prior reports, I think even when it came to multifamily parking, indicated about seventy percent, eighty percent of the existing multifamily dwellings that were built prior to two thousand and two didn't comply with the two-unit standard. So, they were all, uh, non-conforming and would have to deal with, uh, variance issues if they wanted to modify or do something with them. And then there was a, uh, another number, I think, in the report, it talked about the development since two thousand and two. So, uh, I think there has been a lot of that discussion in, in staff, looking at existing situations based on where the Planning Commission wanted us to look at various topics.
That's a really-
There were several topics that the Planning Commission and zoning board discussed that you decided to put off. These just have, these two happen, be two that you ask us to move forward to a public hearing.
That's really interesting, because, uh, and I appreciate you sharing that. You read a lot of comments about, you know, keep Royal Oak the way it's always been and everything. The reality is, in this parking example, you know, there's an argument to say, well, yeah, you know, most of these two thousand and two are not complying to that two-standard anyways. And that's, and I'm not de-minimizing any of the questions about overflow parking or whatever, just trying to say there's been some obvious sensationalization, um, some lobbying, some, you know, blatant attempt to, to fear-monger here a little bit, I think, based on what I've picked up on, um, you know, and probably rooting from a, a person that, when they were in office and when they were actually the city attorney, had the same notice requirements and everything as well. So, I'll get off my soapbox for a little bit, because I do appreciate some, reading through all that, some of the false stuff. There are some bits of information- There are some bits of information there I think residents put forward that, um, you know, I think are very legitimate and that we need to, to talk about, I think, as a body, but um, I'll leave it there.
All right, thank you. Mr. Guntina.
Yeah, I just think I want to make one other statement. I, I certainly, you know, am concerned that there's residents that feel like their voice has not been heard. Uh, I do want to acknowledge that, you know, obviously, we want to make sure that all residents feel as though that um, they have a, a voice in the decisions that we make here. Uh, the reason I made my comments earlier was that I do believe that we, we did give opportunity for the residents to um, to voice an opinion on this topic, as we have discussed it several times in this forum. Um, the noticing requirements we've already discussed, uh, I, I just, you know, I certainly don't want residents to feel as though they've been slighted. Uh, at the same time, I do feel as though we've given um, adequate opportunity for input from residents on this topic um, in, in this public format.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I just would kind of wanted to jump in and say I appreciate staff, by the way, because I, this packet of information has, you know, been given to me about tonight's meeting. And I see reports going back, you know, more than, you know, two years. Uh, this has been a question that's been ongoing and ongoing um, from the commission and staff putting in hard work and coming up with recommendations. And so um, I appreciate staff. I just wanted to say out loud publicly, thanks for all the hard work. I know Mr. Twing is part of leading that team and, but there's a lot of people involved in. So, you know, you hear comments about there's no studies done, there's no, you know, this is coming out of nowhere. Um, yeah, not so much coming out of nowhere, and a lot of hard work has gone into where we are now. But speaking of where we are now, at almost ten fifteen P M, I'm wondering where we're going with this discussion about um, you know, the met uh, proposed text amendments here. Does anyone have thoughts on that?
Well, I, I just wanted to really quick second the motion on appreciating staff. I've said before, the staff courts here are, are outstanding. I've been to other cities. Um, but as far as what's gonna go on, and I, I think there's so much uh, to talk about here. We could probably talk about this all night. I think there's always politics involved, which uh, uh, we heard, but there's also, there was also a lot of thoughtful comments. Uh, I think there was also some, you know, like I said, we could talk all night about, there's fifty-two issues here, but I, I wanna uh, probably advocate for uh, not uh, voting uh, determinatively on the, on these amendments, because I do think we need more uh, community engagement. But I do want to ask Mr. Twing a question, because one of the things I heard in this, in the, in the public comments was a fear about impact on the single-family neighborhoods. I didn't see anything in these text amendments that actually changed anything in the single-family neighborhoods, and I thought we should uh, confirm that with Mr. Twang, that that is the case. Is, is that correct? I, I looked through all the amendments. I don't see anything in the single-family neighborhoods.
That's correct. No, it was all the other, many of the other zoning districts.
Yes, and there, there could be effects by being adjacent to a single-family neighborhood. Um, but I just, I'll throw one thing and then I'll hopefully uh, uh, maybe spark some commentary there. But just to speak to the idea of the thirty to thirty-six foot height. For me, one of the issues we saw was that Moisey of Gordon design on Eleven Mile, where they're trying to create a sing, a, a multifamily. And by the way, you know, one of the great things about Royal Oak is the eclectic nature of the neighborhoods. They're single-family neighborhoods, but there's lots of neighborhoods that are, have, have, have multifamily incorporated into them. There's a charm to that, eclecticness. That's what I like about Royal Oak. And so in order to make those work and not have people parking on the street, you gotta give people the ability to park on their property and parking on the first floor, like that Moisey of Gordon uh, design. They use the first floor. Many of these res, multifamily residential do that. They use the first floor. The, the first level is parking, so they can make the project work. And uh, we actually rejected one, if I remember the one on Austin and Main Street, we didn't, we didn't approve that one, but that was another case where in order to put that project together, they used the first level as, as parking. And if you don't increase the height, uh, you're not going to be able to make that work uh, as often. So to, for me, that's one of the benefits of moving from a thirty uh, to a thirty-six inch height. So um, well, I think we're responding to the market. I think we're, change is the only, I hate to speak in cliches, but change is the only constant. Uh, we have all sorts of changes, like businesses uh, not being able to sustain themselves on Woodward because there isn't parking. Um, and, and we have empty buildings and, and the like, and that's changed, that's changed for the worse. So uh, this uh, planning commission, I think we don't do our, our duty unless we seek ways to address those issues. So that's my comment. Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. Um, what people maybe don't realize is that for more than five years, the planning commission has routinely been allowing multifamily buildings that are taller than thirty feet and have fewer than two parking spaces per unit. Uh, we are responding to uh, consumer demand uh, for uh, apartment buildings that have a, a higher first floor, greater ground floor amenities for tenants. Um, and for um, apartment buildings that have much smaller units, almost micro-units, which are only going to be occupied by one person. So we have approved multiple projects with those conditions and haven't seen any negative effects. In fact, I don't know that anyone can look at an apartment building and say, and recognize that it's six feet taller than what we already allow. All we're doing here is cutting a little bit of red tape. That is, a developer who's coming to us for approval will know that they can go with the thirty-six feet instead of the thirty feet and don't need that as a condition of their development. Um, the same with the parking requirement. That doesn't mean they're not going to be coming to us for approval, but these are just two items that we will grant them without having to, to jump through additional hoops. Um, so if we don't approve these, the, I mean, these amendments, um, we will continue, I expect, to respond to market demand and contemporary development practices and approve these conditions. Um, i- interestingly, we, we earlier today um, approved a, a car wash on Woodward Avenue. And we heard uh, people who live nearby concerned about that and complaining about that. Um, and I'm inclined to think that a, a nice office building or medical building um, along Woodward might be uh, preferable to a car wash. But of course, along Woodward, what we find is a lot of small um, uh, buildings. And we hear from people who don't like the fact that there are vacant buildings on Woodward, that there are sketchy businesses on Woodward, that they're transitory. Um, but the only way a developer is going to come in and revitalize Woodward is if they can build up. That is, it makes it advantageous for them to acquire multiple small sites um, and, and create a project that revitalizes that important corridor um, and is uh, uh, financially profitable to them. And the fact remains that even if we, uh, even in allowing the additional height on Woodward, almost every project proposed in these zoning districts will still have to get approval from the planning commission and perhaps the zoning board. And the language for every single one of these heights changes adds a condition that says the proposed height will not adversely affect adjacent properties or nearby residential neighborhoods. So that is automatically a condition of every project we evaluate. Um, I'll speak a little bit about a, a master plan. Um, we, we heard people say it's, it's, you know, you should, you should, you know, let your master plan run for a long time. Ours is twenty-two years old. That's a generation. And in a generation, uh, Royal Oak has changed enormously and market conditions have changed enormously. The climate has changed enorm, enormously. Um, our master plan update is due in two thousand twenty-two. That's less than six months away. Um, by the time we get an R F P out, hire a contractor, get the process started, we will be in two thousand twenty-two and not even certain that we will complete that process within the year. Because a master plan is an enormous exercise in public engagement. I say to all of the people who commented tonight, I expect to see you in those community engagement sessions, because there will be in intense data gathering, both of, you know, quantitative and qualitative public opinion, and also an assessment of uh, current conditions in the economy, in our health, um, in uh, in, in the climate. Um, and a master plan process is also educational. People will learn about zoning and land use patterns. And with that education, we'll be able to make informed decisions where we build consensus among all of our people for the way that we will use the land, the twelve square miles that we have here um, for the future. And so um, I, I absolutely think that, that now is the time to begin that uh, master planning process. Thank you.
Right. Mr. Klooster.
Yes, uh, Mr. Twing, just as a bookkeeping item, is multifamily housing allowed by right in the general business district along Woodward?
Um, by right? Uh, I believe it's a special land use. I'd have to look. You have to look.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just to speak to, it seems that a majority of the comments concerned with the density proposals along Woodward Avenue, we're speaking directly to multifamily housing and perhaps conflating the two issues together um, to result in a, a very concerning situation where we have five-story multifamily housing all along Woodward with no parking spaces, and now everyone's gonna park in my neighborhood. Um, I think it's a, it's a legitimate concern. I think the, the jump from thirty to fifty-six is relatively significant. Um, and a change in the intent and character of, of the original zone. I would say thirty to thirty-six is keeping with the intent and the character of the original zoning of targeting three-story buildings. Three-ten, three-ten-foot stories is not realistic in today's construction environment. Um, so the intent would be to modify that slightly to allow contemporary standards of construction to maintain the character of the zoning in those areas. Um, I would have no problem voting or uh, making a motion to suggest that we move forward with those thirty to thirty-six amendments, because in my opinion, it's keeping with the character and just making adjustments so that we don't have to have these intense conversations over six feet of height that no one is going to notice other than the plan reviewer um, in the building department. The, the parking issue is, it's something that we've seen consistently in multifamily housing. Um, any and all research around multifamily housing and parking points to um, reduction in needs of parking spaces. Um, there is a, in vast majority of situations, there is an abundance of vacant parking that is um, often left over due to minimum parking requirements and zoning ordinances. Um, and if you look across the country, a vast majority of zoning ordinances are um, even flipping the script and looking at max parking ordinance requirements versus minimum parking ordinance requirements. Um, I think in general society, our society is leaning towards um, looking at the benefits of mass transit as opportunities to combat um, climate change and, and other effects that uh, potentially result from individualistic transportation. Um, that will obviously affect how we look at our parking minimums. And as Commissioner Douglas so eloquently put, we've been approving multifamily projects at substantially less than two-point-oh parking spaces per unit for um, at least as long as I've been on the commission. And so far, we've had no deleterious effects that I have been made aware of. Um, again, I think the parking item is one that I would feel very comfortable voting on today, um, because we've been doing it. And again, it's one of those things that it's, it's keeping in the intent of what the zoning ordinance is today is to provide the appropriate number of parking spaces without putting undue burden on the surrounding neighborhoods.
Mr. Mayor.
To your question, residential is allowed in general business when it's above uh, a ground floor permitted use, like a business.
Thank you.
As a special.
As a special lane use, right? So it would come in front of us and have to meet certain criteria.
And you'd get three-hundred-foot notice.
Mr. Mayor, your hand up.
Yeah, I, I would just say, um, I, I appreciate Commissioner Douglas and um, and Mr. Klooster's uh, statements. I think they're, they're very relevant and uh, and certainly very um, something we need to consider. Um, you know, I want to look at it for more of a practical purpose. Um, since I've been on the planning commission, when we look at Woodward Avenue, um, some of these proposed changes certainly have a positive impact. They have some perceived negative impacts. And like Commissioner Douglas said, there's still a number of safeguards that protect to make sure that whatever development happens on Woodward, um, it happens in a responsible way. Um, but let's be honest with ourselves. We just had a discussion tonight on a car wash, because Pier One Imports has been empty for three years. The things that have come to our table on Woodward have been fast food joints, pawn shop considerations, auto parts stores, gas stations, liquor stores, things of that nature. And while those amenities are important, that's what we're attracting on Woodward with our, you know, we don't consider how the world is changing. We don't consider how um, the needs of what people want are changing. We don't consider how businesses for everything from Amazon delivery to, you know, what people are buying and using today. Um, you know, we're gonna have a Woodward corridor that uh, is going to miss out on um, a great potential to be not only harmonized with the neighborhood, uh, but also, you know, provide the amenities that are, are really modern and that we really need and that, that don't really, you know, fall in the categories. Not that any of those things I mentioned are blight, but you know, they don't really fall into that sort of um, you know, high-use case. When we talk about parking in neighborhoods, a lot of that's driven by restaurants, Starbucks, the lineup that we see there. I mean, i- if you have the ability to um, offer a few more levers here to allow folks to build buildings that are closer to the road, because like Mr. Casada said, they can park underneath, uh, they can go a little higher. Um, you know, that's a potential to attract uh, businesses like office buildings, and I would even argue multifamily that have the most minimum impact on adjoining neighborhoods versus um, the other things that I mentioned. So um, I think that everything's a trade-off. Everything has to be considered. I think that, you know, the idea that we'd have big buildings and blocking out light is a fair consideration. The idea that we might have some parking overflow is something we need to talk about. But consider, if we, you know, I, I consider the public to think a little bit, what if we do nothing? Then are we gonna continue to see the same pattern of um, the types of businesses that come before us that, you know, frankly, may not be, you know, the highest and best use of that corridor property for the adjoining neighborhoods? So just something to think about.
And I'll just quickly follow up that thought. I think it's relevant. Is that we heard repeatedly, don't change, don't change Royal Oak. But that's really not an option. Royal Oak is changing just like everybody else is changing. And what we're trying to do, I think, is responsibly manage that change in the best interest of, of our city, which we all love. Um, so not changing is, is really not an option. And, and all right, as long as I still have the floor, I just want to say that I agree with Mr. Klooster. The easiest, the easiest issue here is the thirty to thirty-six feet building height. We've been doing that over and over again. We, I, I don't think we've ever had a fifty-six-foot building that we approved for Woodward, so that's a different animal. But for the thirty to thirty-six, not only do we do it all the time, but um, we also didn't hear very many negative comments about that. And hardly any comments about that. So I guess I, I guess I would say, if we're gonna do anything, uh, that would be the easiest one to do. We didn't, we didn't hear uh, you know, didn't hear, we didn't hear negative comments about that. Mr. Mayor.
I'd also add to that list, the liquor one, um, controlling, that's a real issue and really stymies good development and creates a huge administrative process. I mean, frankly speaking, um, streamlining that approval with the police department and the city commission and, you know, um, unburdening the, the unintended consequence of a conflict of decision-making. I think if we want to keep Royal Oak sort of the, you know, desirable place to invest, um, you know, I think we can get rid of some of these hoops that, you know, quite frankly, aren't always the purview of the planning commission anyways, so.
Okay, if I can respond to that, this, this, this is the first time I heard about this issue. And I found it a little curious, because in fact, developers have all sorts of hoops they have to, to uh, go through. Let's say you wanted to do a, a daycare. You'd have to go to a governmental body to get a light. Let's say you wanted to do a, a daycare, you'd have to go to a governmental body to get a license. Um, and that's really not different. You have to go to a, a lender maybe to get approval. You've got all these layers and hoops now. I'm in favor of making things easier and the department and maybe the city commission has a lot more experience than I do in discerning in which situations we want to make a change to make the process easier. I think the process is multileveled anyways. Now, I would just say that the planning commission does special land use and they do site plans for a living, so to speak. And to be consistent, um, you might want us to keep doing it. If you, if you have the city commission doing, I realize we have two members of the city commission sitting on the planning commission, but, uh, we might enhance consistency by, by keeping site plan and special use with the planning commission. However, everything's a balance. Um, you're balancing, you know, issues and if, uh, on balance, the department and the commission uh, believe that it would be easier, more streamlined, more efficient to make this change. Um, obviously I don't want to stand in the way, but I just make the comment.
Uh, I just, Chairman, because I have to step away for a personal matter at the moment right now, so I'll be back.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, any other comments here on, uh, the, we're really talking about the three text amendments. So, uh, Mr. Klooster. And then Mr. Guntia, Mr. Klooster first.
The way I am understanding the text amendment for the sale of alcoholic beverages is it would, the plane would still come in front of the planning commission if it had a special land use requirement. It just streamlines the order in which things are done. Is the, am I incorrect in my understanding of that?
I don't understand it that way, but Mr. Twink can, can.
Yeah, it, the planning commission would review the special land use and site plan and provide a recommendation to the city commission in terms of whether to grant final approval right now. The, one of the concerns at staff level is the city commission is the local body issuing a license and a plan of operation approval saying that the liquor license is good for this location. The city commission is doing that. The planning commission, on the other hand, if they do the special land use and say, no, it's not, because that's the special land use issue is the sale of liquor, I've got two local bodies seeing two different things. So rather than having that potential, uh, as far as a liquor license go, to me, that should just end with, uh, the city commission on it. Just like right now, as I said before, the, uh, residential accessory parking lots are a special land use that the planning commission sees. Makes a recommendation on the special land use in the site plan, but the city commission has final say on whether that parking lot that's associated with a business can go into a one-family zone. Also, the, the marijuana establishments are going to go through that same process when you see them. The planning commission will see them and you will review their site plan and you will give the city commission a recommendation as to up or down. Many and all of the PUDs and the conditional rezonings that you see, you're also providing a recommendation to the city commission on those plans and those proposals. And the city commission's making a decision on that rezoning. So there are numerous types of developments that the planning commission sees that you're providing your expertise and recommendation to the city commission as what to do with them. Right now, the zoning ordinance says you can't even get the planning commission to take an action on a restaurant that wants liquor until the city commission says you have a license. So most petitioners don't even bother applying to come to the planning commission to get your input or your site plan under a liquor license. A lot of them just leave it off. The most recent example is the former Pasquale's that wanted to put the big boy there in another facility. They just decided they were doing a box and then worry about the liquor license later to avoid having to go wait to do a two-stepper, if I, if I'm making sense. So it's a, the way the ordinance is written right now is you know, somebody could apply for special land use and site plan for a restaurant with liquor or a bar, but the planning commission couldn't take any action at all. The ordinance says you can't act until the city commission dealt, deals with the license. So my comment is why bother with that? Why not give the commission a recommendation and let the commission decide. It just keeps it moving. And it's not, it's not an uncommon practice under the ordinance of other, other things, so. And, and then it doesn't slow someone down on the backside. Uh, they can process it through.
Anyways, good. Okay, thank you. Mr. Gantina, you, I got cut off there.
Sorry.
No problem. Um, I just, I guess I just want to say I'm comfortable with moving forward on the, uh, protection on the thirty to thirty-six foot change. I agree with all the statements that have been, and I think that's, um, relatively innocuous in terms of everything that we're considering here. And, uh, same for the sales of alcohol. I do think that it's, it's streamlining the process and sort of hopefully relieving some frustrations that have been documented. What I'm a little bit less comfortable moving forward with on right now is the parking, uh, item. Only, uh, from the standpoint of I, I would like to, uh, I guess have a little bit more discussion around requirements on EV charging, either EV chargers as part of that multifamily parking requirement or EV charging infrastructure, as well as, uh, some additional conversation around one of our colleagues, Ms. Beeky's comment on requirements around bike parking for multifamily as well. Um, I, neither of those, you know, have been discussed to, to date because I don't think we directed staff to do that. But as this is coming back to us, um, that, that parking issue with the, the, uh, requirement on the number of spaces potentially changing, I think if we're discussing changes to the parking requirements now would be a good time to discuss whether, you know, changes to requirements around EV charging infrastructure and bike parking would be um, relevant as well. If the group decided that it's not, my, I guess my fear would be, um, if, if it's something that we think we can maybe address in a master plan, my fear would be to make changes now to only potentially make changes again within the next, you know, twelve to twenty-four months. So um, I guess that's my comment. I'm comfortable with the other two. Uh, I'd maybe like a little more discussion on the parking.
Mr. Curtis.
Well, how about a motion? Let's start with, uh, approving the text amendments as we've seen them regarding, uh, change from thirty-foot construction to thirty-six-foot construction. Again, we all, I think, are in agreement that this is just a matter of modern construction. So I would like to make the motion to approve for any of the ones that talk about from thirty-foot construction to thirty-six-foot construction.
Okay, I'm gonna call on Commissioner Douglas, then I'm gonna get a clarification from you. Commissioner Douglas.
This is a second.
Oh, that's a second. I'm sorry, I couldn't see your fingers. So just to clarify the motion, I'm looking at the, uh, the staff report here and we're talking about maximum permitted heights for multifamily in the multifamily residential zone in the office service, neighborhood business and neighborhood business two zones and the um, mixed use one and mixed use two zones. Is that correct?
Well, what I said was all of them that say move from thirty to thirty-six. So if you just listed all of them, it's correct.
Okay, those are, those are the, the, the three bullet points that I see from the staff report. I didn't want to put it on record.
Yep.
As to clarify your, your motion. Is there a discussion? There's a second, so is there a discussion? We, we still have a quorum. One, two, three, four, five. We have a quorum even without the mayor. Well, we have a motion, we have a second. Oh, there he is.
I'm back.
Let me, uh, bring you up to date. So we had a motion from Mr. Curtis, second by Commissioner Douglas to approve the text amendment that would, uh, raise the height of multifamily buildings to thirty to thirty-six feet in the three or in the zones that are listed in the staff report, which are multifamily residential, office service, neighborhood business, neighborhood business two, mixed use one and mixed use two. In those zoning, uh, uh, areas, there would be, uh, increase in the permitted heights to thirty-six.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And we, uh, I requested, uh, there's further discussion and up to this point, there has been none. And then you return.
Just like that.
Yes.
Good luck on mine. Great timing.
Yes. So if there isn't any discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. That's my point. All right, seeing no further discussion, I will call for the vote and we'll start with Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Gantina.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the motion passes for the increase from thirty to thirty-six feet for multifamily buildings as described in the motion. All right. The other motions.
Well, I'm willing to take another run at one. Uh, given that I, I'm going to leave the fifty-six-foot height stuff. I actually have stuff I want to talk about. You know, I'm going to leave that for now. Um, I was really interested in what Mr. Gantina brought up about parking, so I'm going to leave that. However, this discussion about how alcoholic sales are run through the city machine, uh, I will make the motion to amend as, uh, our report, uh, about alcoholic sales a- a- as they're presented to us tonight.
All right, the motion, uh, made a motion. Is there a second? Is that a second, Mr. Klooster? Okay, we have a second. Is there a discussion about the motion to, uh, approve the text amendments as presented in the staff report uh, regarding the, uh, process of, uh, approving sale of alcoholic beverage, uh, well, various things, as the staff report says. All right, well, I'll make a comment here. I, I have, I have some misgiving because I don't quite understand it. Uh, it seems to me that one of the things that could be done is to, uh, no longer require a sequence. I mean, there's nothing wrong with a developer going on two tracks at the same time. They do it all the time. Um, they've got a bunch of balls juggling in the air. Uh, right now, we have a sequence which I think probably contributes to the slowdown. Uh, I'm wondering why we even have that sequence. Like I said, developers all the time um, have to, have to multi-track. If they have to get a license from the state for something, they have to get a loan. They have to secure property, uh, they're, they're, their property purchases on an option. They've got all sorts of things that they're doing at the same time. So it seems to me they could, they could do that. However, I also, like I said, I would like to take reasonable steps to, to lessen, uh, what is certainly perceived as bureaucratic red tape and, and hurdles that are in their way. Uh, we do want all, uh, land, uh, use, uh, to go through the proper channels to, to be vetted by this body and other bodies that do so. Um, I'd also say this, another comment, just to, to go on, this is the last thing I'll say, is that when it comes to granting a license, I haven't said on any board about granting a license, so I don't know that much about it. But on this board, we are about addressing the use of the parcel in relationship not only to the parcel itself, but to the neighbors, the roads, utilities, um, under the zoning. That's, that's about the parcel. A license, it seems to me, is about the person you're giving the license to. So I do think it's two different, uh, unless I'm wrong about that. I mean, when you give somebody a liquor license, it's, you're giving it to them, the entity or the person that may be attached to an address, but you're not taking into consideration, I don't think, the land use when you're doing that. I do think they're two different things, but that's just my comment. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Doesn't look like we have any further comment. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to call for the vote. We'll start with the mayor.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Gantina.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
And I'm a yes because, um, I want to make things smoother. So the, the motion passes, so the, uh, the text amendments as proposed by, in the staff report relative to the sale of alcoholic beverage approvals is passed. Is there any other, uh, motions or comments or discussion regarding the text? Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and I know, and I apologize, I had to miss some discussion. Uh, one of my kids had a health issue I had to address real quick. Pretty violent, bloody nose. Not that you know some details, but, uh, I needed to save my carpet, so. The, uh, um, the question that, um, you know, for me, I think, I, again, we had some stuff. I feel like there's, there's been some people that came in with really good intentions of public comment. I've received some personal emails uh, on my city account where people have taken a, a, a very good approach as far as explaining some of their concerns related to the parking um, and related to, uh, the, the building height, the fifty-six-foot building height. Um, I think there probably merits a little bit more discussion on that. I think it's probably more first, I, um, you know, now that there's engagement, we can have a little bit more maybe education, uh, and then, you know, move forward with a little bit more discussion. Um, I am of the opinion that, um, I feel like I, I understand exactly what everyone's saying here. In fact, I adopt some of those, uh, concepts as well. I don't think it's an issue. We've been doing this with parking uh, anyways, and we haven't had a negative impact. Some of the ones that we hear complaints about are actually from uh, buildings that were built, you know, prior to two thousand and two. Um, so I, I don't, I don't think it hurts to have a little bit more engagement. Um, you know, but, um, you know, I certainly agree with Commissioner Douglas. You can't wait, you know, ten years. I mean, there's a lot that's going to happen on, on Woodward. Um, you know, we can't just live in a snapshot in time in the past. I think that the way mobility is changing, um, you know, and, and the confluence of real estate mobility coming together, um, there's a lot of stuff we need to, to look at if we're going to have a successful Woodward corridor that works for neighborhoods, works for business, reduces blight and gives us the type of businesses and buildings that we need, uh, to thrive. So um, I don't have an issue if anyone wants to, to, to kick it down the road a little bit. But I also, I mean, am subscribing in general to the fact that we have to do something. Uh, maybe I'm a little bit more tempered, but um, you know, I'll just kind of leave it at that, I guess. That's my thoughts and then I'll stop talking.
Mr. Curtis.
Well, I, I don't know that Mr. Mayor was here when, um, Mr. Gantina shared something that made me think, oh, yeah, that's a good thought that hadn't occurred to me. And so I was ready to maybe take some run at the parking issue tonight. Um, but what he said, uh, Mr. Mayor had to do with EV charging stations and bike parking and things that I think don't need to wait another couple of years. Um, but I, I kind of appreciated his perspective to say, maybe we can take an even bigger look. It's, you know, what parking is going on in our city and what's needed going forward and kind of wrap them all in together. And I didn't feel like I was really ready to sort that all out tonight. But I don't think it needs to wait long. I just think that's a great new thought that we should work on.
Mr. Mayor.
Excellent thought. And I'll also tell you in my vocation, what I do for a living. Um, I study parking deeply and there are technologies that are coming onboard right now that would amaze you, that are going to be implemented, uh, very shortly here that reduce, you know, you get the same amount of park, parking, uh, parked vehicles with fifteen to twenty percent less real estate. Um, it opens up the doors for shared vehicles. Um, so there's some things that are already, you see downtown LA, uh, they've gone to zero parking minimums. I mean, there's all the, and, and, and you know what? The developers are still building buildings with parking and all of this. So I think there's a broader thing and the EV charging is really interesting too because that's going to add another layer, um, that I think we really need to consider. And I appreciate Mr. Gantina bringing that up because um, that is going to impact how we look at parking minimums.
Commissioner Douglas.
Well, I do just want to give Commissioner Beeky credit, although she is not with us tonight. Um, the, the bike parking and EV parking were issues she had raised also.
I think those are well worth discussion, further discussion, yes. Um, all right, um, I want to make a comment in response to the mayor about Woodward, and I think you were referring to the fifty-six foot height. I did go up and down Woodward and I didn't have a tape measure with me, but I don't think we have any fifty-six-foot buildings there except maybe Basha, which is a four-foot building. And so I think that there probably needs to be some advocacy. And so I think that there probably needs to be some advocacy there in terms of what is trying to be accomplished more than has happened up to date, because indeed, we haven't approved anything like that here. So, all right, other discussion. There's a lot to this, there's a tremendous amount to discuss, we could literally sit here all night.
No, I will fall asleep, I can't sit here all night.
We don't want to do that, so we, we have, I tell you what, I'm going to move this on, we've accomplished a couple of things here. I think that, Mr. Twain, do we need to make a motion to, to adjourn further discussion on the other text amendments, do we have to take an official action, or can we simply move on to the next issue?
No, I think you can just move on, the items that you're recommending to the city commission will pass on to the commission. The others will just stay for the board's discussion and when we're ready to schedule it back. I think the only item left is the master plan memo.
Well, we had two additions also, but let's talk about the master plan then. Let's move on to that, and you did not give us a, your synopsis of that, I don't think, so why don't you do something?
Very briefly, the, the last, the last meeting, the planning commission talked about wanting to move forward with the, the first step in what a master plan would be. So we drafted a resolution similar to the one we did a few years ago at the five-year review period, which is basically simply the planning commission saying you want to start the process, it's not anything, and that's the normal first step is to, to simply pass a resolution that says it's time to get this process started. It's, it's not a approval of any particular terms or plan. And, and you'll see in the resolution, it's simply asking the city commission as well to authorize that staff send out a request for qualifications from firms to get that process moving, to hire someone that we would bring in to actually coordinate the writing of a master plan and as well as all the community engagement that would go along with that, so this is very much the first step, because if you don't pass this resolution and the city commission doesn't pass it, staff's not going to spend any time on this, we're just going to be done. So this is really the first step for you guys to say you want to move this forward, so.
Mr. Klooster.
Yeah, I just, I want to speak ever so briefly as to some of the some of the concerns voiced by public comment that we heard today. I think there is a, there's a little bit of a misnomer in the idea that doing a full master plan means that every single thing in the city is going to be flipped on its head. I've, I've participated in several of these, and the, the greatest thing that comes out of a comprehensive master plan is doing all the analysis of the existing conditions and all of the research that goes into what the existing conditions are, and finding the things that are working really well, and pouring more resources and energy into making sure those continue to work well. So I, I just, a master plan really evaluates where the city is, and the last time we did this level of comprehensive, full analysis, full research to evaluate everything was a significant amount of time ago, and it's, it's if for no more than confirming things that we think we know, it's worthwhile to do that comprehensive analysis and entertain new technologies, new ways of living, new demographics, and any of the other new research items that will come up during this master plan process that involves a significant amount of community engagement to kind of really reinforce what we have and what we love about this city.
I, I'm sorry, I, I'm unwilling to take a shot at this particular motion, I'm reading these notes and all the things this motion ought to address. But I do want to tell you, if anyone's interested in making a run at a motion, I think I would be in favor of moving the process on down the road, as Mr. Twain has already, you know, just told us, look, it's up to you guys to do something here. Staff has done what they're doing, you know, it's time to either do it or not do it, in my opinion, which is simply approving, you know, the opportunity to, you know, look for RFP and, and start, you know, a, a small step in a direction that I think most of us believe we need to go, so. But I'm not willing to make a run at that motion tonight, I've made my motions.
Commissioner Douglas.
So my, my question would be, I guess, to, to Mr. Twain, in the, in the wheres, is you've got a, a, a sentence that says whereas the city of Royal Oak has changed to warrant an entirely new master plan, including but not limited to the following, and then you've got just list conditions that have changed, who is to list those conditions? I, I mean, are we going, are we, are we going to write?
And it can, it can be brief, it can be, it can be, staff would have brought this to you probably in, in another several months and as part of the five-year review. But I think it's up to you to articulate why you think it's important to start this process now and, and what that is.
Well, I nominate Mr. Klooster because he just did that, that was a good speech.
There was, just add those to that portion.
Well, I'll just, I, I agree with Mr. Curtis on that, I, I would make a comment there before it happened, so. There was a comment in the public part of the, the commentary on an issue that I also flagged myself when I looked at this. Just as a matter of drafting here, I think that the therefore be resolved section there, we could amend some of that language, it says the current master plan, city made the Royal Oak master plan, the maps, the, the future lane, quote, are no longer relevant and applicable to the physical development city of Royal Oak, but really, it's, they're not as relevant and as applicable as they were when they were drafted. I guess I would, just as a matter of, of clarification there, is the master plan is still relevant, but it was not as relevant as it was twenty years ago, and we may indeed maintain many parts of it, I wouldn't be quite surprised if maintaining neighborhoods wasn't one of the top, if not the top goal of the master plan when we do it again. So it's, it's not that it's not relevant, just as a matter of maybe some, some understanding with the public, we're not saying it has no relevance. I think we should be saying that, because I don't think it's true, it's just over passage of time has, has left it less relevant and in need of updating. Mr. Gantina.
Perhaps it's, it's a bit of semantics, but you, you just used a word that came to me when Mr. Klooster was talking. You know, while the statement, the whereas statement is to warrant an entirely new master plan, that, that's really not an accurate statement in the sense that a master plan currently does exist. And I doubt that we're going to be redrafting the entire master plan to create an entirely new one. And really what we're discussing is an update to the master plan. You know, we're going to be gathering information to kind of help show us what's working, and, and we know that certain things need to change. I, I wonder if, from a language perspective, utilizing that term update versus an entirely new changes things a bit, or if, not being familiar with this process, having not gone through before, if that, that statement of an entirely new master plan is actually what's needed, despite the fact that we might just be updating the existing.
Okay, we got Mr. Klooster first, and then Commissioner Douglas.
So I think that language opens a dangerous door into calling it an amendment to the master plan, which means we have to be very specific on the certain things that we look at and what sections we want to amend and, and or not amend, in which case the bulk of the master plan would remain intact. If we, the last time that this was updated was two thousand and twelve with amendments. I, I believe what we've discussed up to this point, and I think probably a bulk of the commissioners have voiced favor for is a comprehensive analysis and whether the, whether the goals and objectives that are in the current master plan carry over, I think is more of like the, the sentiment, like it will be a new master plan in the fact that we're doing a comprehensive analysis of the entire master plan. Through that effort, it is highly likely that a significant number of the goals, objectives, and other things that are in the current master plan that are working for us will carry over and continue to be goals and objectives in the new master plan. Having a new master plan doesn't mean we have to flip everything on its head and do everything different than, than what we have right now.
I will accept that explanation because it helps make sense for, for me.
Mr. Douglas.
What he said.
All right, so I would just suggest that the, that the whereas clause about the listed conditions that have changed could be very simple, including, like I said, just the, the passage of twenty years is an important change, and the, the change in, in you know, our economics, our demographics, it doesn't have to be very elaborate, I think the passage of twenty years is pretty, pretty significant by itself. But I'm, I'm trying to unburden whoever wants to make a motion. Commissioner Douglas.
Well, must we list the conditions that have changed? Or can we just not say, whereas conditions in the city of Royal Oak have changed to warrant an entirely new master plan?
That sounds good to me.
Semi-colon.
It's your resolution.
Okay, I'm going to take a swing at that, I'm editing that cause, as I just said, and moving that we adopt the resolution as proposed.
Second, I like it.
All right, there's a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution as proposed with the amended language struck out of the fourth whereas clause. No other changes. There further discussion on this? All right, I'm going to maintain my objection to the completely irrelevant language, but I don't think that's the termative here. All right, any, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, let's start with Mr. Gantina.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
Klooster.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so the motion passes, and so the resolution is adopted to start the process of the new master plan. For the reasons stated. All right. Anything else on the master plan issue, are we ready to move on? All right, it appears that there's a city of Berkeley issue here, just that's, that's an informational thing.
That's just informational, oops, yeah, that's just informational, it's notice, we're going to have to send out a similar notice to Berkeley and others, so saying that Royal Oak wants to start the same thing.
Very good, all right, the next issue on the agenda that we added is meetings going forward, now we're here by Zoom, and we've had, I'm a little curious myself, because I was up north for a few days, and I came back and I, you know, looked at the newspaper, the, the, the news, and there was a seventy average for new COVID cases, it went way up. So what, what, Mr. Twain, can you tell us, or, or anybody on the city commission, what's going on with the state of emergency and how that might affect us going forward?
Well, right now, there's no additional requirements. As far as I'm aware, from the state or the county health department, the city is employee-wise looking at starting to have employees start wearing masks again, but everyone is still in the building, working. The city commission has met their last two meetings, I believe, in person. The DDA is meeting in person, and we'll probably continue that next week. But the way the city commission passed the state of emergency extension, it's, it's really up to each body to make that determination for yourselves. For the, did that go through the end of the year, or was it? I'm not, I'm not sure how long that went.
Yeah, the, the state of emergency is through the end of the year, but of course, that doesn't require distance meetings, it only allows them.
Right.
Okay, so what I hear from Mr. Twain is it's at our pleasure as a body, what we want to do, meetings going forward at least through December. And we can, we can make a decision, and I might even suggest this, that we, we might make a decision every month. The, the first issue on the table is what do we do for next month? In September. Mr. Curtis.
Well, I was one, wanted to add this to the agenda, what we did last month wasn't good enough. The technology dropped, you know, the call dropped, I couldn't participate any further, so if we're going to do something other than Zoom that allows for distancing, we got to be able to do it better than that, so I guess I have a question at this stage, is where are we from a city hall perspective of being able to run meetings that allow for distancing at all?
Well, again, my understanding is there's not the ability to run hybrid meeting other than the fashion that we ran it in the city commission chambers. Other rooms, other conference rooms that aren't that size are set up for Zoom meetings, but the planning commission meetings generally have a little, little bigger turnout, so I'm not sure you can hold a planning commission meeting in one of the conference rooms, but in my understanding with WROK, there's a delay. Even if you like, even if we were able to livestream and have you come in over the streaming, there's a delay in of almost a minute between what you're seeing and what's actually occurring at the meeting, so. Not sure there's a answer to do a hybrid meeting other than the way we set it up last time.
Well, yes, that was, and that was choppy indeed. So, given that information, I think the commission has to make a motion, or Mr. Curtis.
Well, yeah, I, I hear that, and I experienced it, so I don't, don't disagree with it being a problem, the fact that we can't do it in a brand-new building here in the twenty-first century, I find discouraging, so. I would, would really like to see some effort and understand what the heck, I mean, no, if Mr. Twain's not a, you know, an IT guy, you know, yes, not your expertise, there's got to be somebody who knows how to do these things, now. That said, we're, we're, we're at the crest, we're at the beginning of the fourth wave here, and I think it's absurd to put the public in, 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 you know, the, there's no direction from the state, because the state legislature took the powers away that, that were giving direction, and a legislature by nature is slow, right, like that's just what legislatures are, they're slow, and so the latest updates from the CDC and other places, we don't get direction from the state, is what I'm telling you, so it's absurd, you know, we don't, we shouldn't wait for that. We do have the city leadership say, well, yeah, we need to extend this city emergency out through the, the end of the year, so that's done, and that's useful from my perspective, I think we need to look at if we can't do a hybrid meeting, being on Zoom, because I don't think it makes sense to do in-person meetings at, at the beginning of this fourth wave.
Mr. Klooster.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say that this, the Zoom format is substantially better than that, than the hybrid attempt. So in the effort of making sure that all commission members and all members of the public have an opportunity to provide input and participate, whether it be in a, a compromised capacity, I think we, I think the commission members that were at the in-person meeting last month kind of voiced a, a kind of unanimous opinion that the public was able to probably engage slightly better at an in-person meeting. But that also potentially limits the number of people who are willing to participate because of the potential risks that are, that are out there currently, so. Potentially limits the number of people who are willing to participate because of the potential risks that are, that are out there currently. So. I'll wrap that up. I'll allow more comment before we jump into motions.
Okay, Mr. Curtis and then Commissioner Douglas.
Well, yeah, of course, face to face lets people interact on a more human sort of way. So, but you know, I, I heard the phrase last week, it serves the public better. I would say unless they get infected with COVID. So. I, I wish we didn't have a pandemic. Ever, let alone lingering into, you know, our second year here with disrupting lives. But it's not just disrupting lives, it's potentially taking lives. And so hospitalizations are up, deaths are up, infections are way up. So we got to avoid, in my opinion, putting people in harm's way.
All right, Commissioner Douglas, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thank you. I, I'm going to disagree. Having now participated in two live city commission meetings, the degree of. Just intercourse among, among the commissioners was valuable. It's a different dynamic than it is in this Zoom setting. The degree of public engagement or the nature of public commentary is different when we're face to face. Oakland County is at 70% vaccination rates. I mean, I, we have a very high degree of compliance in the county. We expect our employees to go to work every day and to address the public. And I think we as commissioners. While we're not getting a paycheck should comply with the same standards that the city is requiring of its employees.
All right, other comments? All right, I'll make a, I'll make a comment, serve a response from Mr. Curtis. It is an interesting but possibly imponderable. Whether or not more people participate by Zoom because they're not worried about exposing themselves or, or more people would engage. In, in person meeting because that's what they're used to and, and, and at the, at the in-person meeting, we had a lot of people there. At that meeting, not, it wasn't a full house, but there was a significant number of people, but we had a lot of people talk today as well. So. Not sure one way or the other, which way that cuts, but. At any rate, I think that I, I've been in. Last month I wanted to be in person. I still want to be in person, but I think that. Given the uncertainties and the spike in infections. And we have a couple of members who would rather not be in that situation. And you could look at it several ways, but I'm certainly willing to. Conduct another Zoom meeting next month if somebody were to make that motion. I, of course, I prefer to be in person if possible, but I certainly would not oppose such a motion. It's closer.
Yeah, I'm, I just was going to say I, I hundred percent agree with everything that Commissioner Douglas said. And in spite of that, I'm going to make a motion that we hold this September meeting via Zoom and add an agenda item to the September meeting that we review this for. This topic for the remainder of the year.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Curtis. Is there further discussion? Mr. Mayor.
I'll just add, I'm, I'm going to go along with, with what I think the, the vote's going to go with the committee. I think for me, you know, even on the city commission side, you know, it's, it's, we have to be cognizant of not. Just the majority rule in situations like this, and I'm grateful that. This body has some good people here that are listening to the concerns of, of folks that put, you know, that have maybe some health issues or health concerns or, you know, in, in err on the side of caution. And we're, we're working with the, you know, with those folks and the same thing at the city commission. If there's one or two people that. Feel we need to go back to Zoom meetings, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at that and probably do it. So. I think that's a good spirit. It's a testament to the camaraderie and, you know, great working effort of this group.
All right, any other comments? It's Gantina.
I guess I'll just put my two cents in. I'm, I'm torn on this subject, right? I, I appreciate Commissioner Douglas's statements because I too follow. Sort of our local county statistics as, you know, that's the world that we're sort of most immediately exposed to. And so I think the, the data is suggesting that we're, we're from a vaccination standpoint trending in the right direction of, as a localized community. At the same token, I do agree with Mr. Curtis that we are entering a new phase of this virus, unfortunately. And, you know, I, I would hate to put either my own health or anyone else's health at risk. With a decision that could just as easily go a different way. And, and have everyone's participation in a much safer manner. I do think, you know, engagement in person is certainly better. But I would not want to put anyone's health at risk, even despite the fact that our, I think our risk is, is somewhat more mitigated here in Oakland County than in other areas. I think the, you know, the best solution to keep everyone involved and keep everyone safest is to hold next month's meeting remote and then. Again, next month, discuss what the next meeting should be like.
All right, thank you. Any further comments? All right, hearing none of them, call for the vote, the vote is.
Sorry, sorry, I just, and if there's a way to get hybrid meetings other than Zoom, I'm still looking for that. Sorry.
I appreciate, appreciate that. Okay, I'm still going to call for the vote. And I'll start with you, Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Gantina.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
No.
And I am a yes. So the motion passes five to one. So our next meeting will be by Zoom in September and one of the agenda items will be at the end of the meeting is what we do for October. All right. Next. There was a signage of Henry Ford. I talked to somebody about this, but I don't know who, but somebody brought it up. So whoever brought it up, please bring this forward.
Yep, so that was me and I'm actually bringing it to this group to discuss because I'm not sure how to move forward. Several members of the community came up to me with questions around specifically the signage on the west elevation of the building. I believe it's the, the one that says Henry Ford Medical Center. And the comments to me were related to the size of the, the height of the, of the letters on that sign. And in looking at it. It occurred to me, I believe that what we approved was smaller than what is up there, or I should say a different size than what may be on the building. Of course, I was not able to go out there to measure it. I have not gone back to look at our notes to see what in fact we did approve. So my question to the group and actually maybe to Mr. Twing at the end of the day is. Do we have the ability to verify that they did in fact install the signage that was approved? Based on the size that was approved? If not, I guess what's the recourse? And if, you know, if this is a big enough concern, how do we go about verifying whether or not it's the correct size sign? And the only reason I bring it up is that, you know, like I said, multiple members of the community had mentioned it to me. So I figured it was warranted, warranted bringing it up to this body since we approved it.
Well, we can certainly check the, the approval, what was presented, what was approved. And we can certainly try to make an effort to figure out what was actually installed as far as as built. There may be some way to compare the. Without physically getting a tape measure up on the top of the roof and measuring it. There may be a way to compare the, the dimensions of the buildings to what's there and, and get some sort of. Dimensions off of it and make sure that it is compliant and ask for the as built on it from, from Henry Ford and if it's not compliant. We have every right to issue a violation notice that it wasn't installed pursuant and ask them to fix it.
Any other questions or comments? I will say I noticed it too, that I thought, hey, I thought we had a big discussion about that and I thought we asked them to. You know, reduce this, the height of the letters and it didn't look reduced to me either. So. Anyways, you're not the only one who noticed it. Mr. Klooster.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo that same comment that it, when I saw it going up. It appeared much larger to me than, than what we had seen in front of our body.
It was, the original design was, proposal was pretty large. I think they were 10 feet or something like that. And. Anyways, it was, it was, the, the proposal was an issue that was the, the side, the height of the letters was definitely an issue that was discussed and I. My recollection, recollection is we asked them to reduce the size and they said they would, and I can't remember what the size was. Mr. Curtis.
Just going to ask, does, do we need to do something as a commission to look into that? I mean, do we need a motion or do we just ask staff? Okay, good.
No, no, we're good. We'll just check it.
Issue, I think so. All right. Very good. Thank you for bringing that up. I think that oftentimes. There are things that don't happen the way we approve them, but it probably happens. Sometimes you don't notice. That one was pretty noticeable, I think. We'll see, we'll see if we confirm it.
It could be a possibility that we, that we erred in not being specific enough with our wishes when we voted on the motion. And hopefully, you know, a little bit of investigation will bring that to light as well. So we hopefully don't make that mistake again in the future.
Yes, sure. There's always facts that helps to have the facts. So we'll have to look into it. All right, any other? Issues? That's the end of the agenda as far as I know. I would, Commissioner Douglas, you had a comment? No? Okay. All right. I think that's, I think that's all we have. So I would call for the motion or acclamation to adjourn the meeting. Never know what the right way to do that is. It seems that we got to do it by acclamation, but I will, I will seek a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Douglas. There's a second, there's a second there. Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Klooster.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Gantina.
Yes.
And I mean, yes, meetings adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Thanks to Mr. Twang, Mr. Liz, Ms. Schwanger and all of you. We'll see you. In September on Zoom. Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Good night, everyone.